This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
But I do think we should get going. There he is. Great. All right. Ben is coming on. Okay. I am going to have us open up this meeting with a roll call vote. So Megan.
Megan Harvey here.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
Meryl Lashapelle?
Meryl Lashapelle here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Marin?
Aaron Goldstein here.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
And Cindy Kuzensky here. Welcome to the May 24th School Committee Meeting. The first announcement I want to make is not a happy one. I've just been made aware that there was a school shooting in Texas. Fourteen students were killed and one teacher. And I think the number was fifteen students were injured. This is just such a horrific event. And I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for the people who have lost their lives. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, I hate to start a meeting that way, but I, this is, that is horrific. Okay, so let's go to Megan and ask, do we have correspondence, of which I know the answer is, yes, we do.
Um, yes, we have correspondence. Sorry, I'm a little it's just hard to hear the news. Okay, we have a lot of correspondence to report from the past week. I want to report that we received correspondence from Jessica Clark, who is the director at Young World Child Care Center, figuring out and trying to get some logistics ironed out about busing children before and after school to Mountain View School, as is happening at other before and after school locations in East Hampton, to give parents as many options as possible to have options for where children can go before and after school, safe places for kids to go before and after school. And we received a really nice email from Christian Reader, who is one of the co-owners of Comics &amp; More, talking about a lot of various items related to COVID and COVID safety, urging caution as the end of the year approaches in this sort of silent surge that we have going on, not saying that there necessarily has to be a mask mandate, but asking at what point, sort of, would there be a mask mandate? And that schools should be providing KF94 and above higher quality masks for children, faculty, staff, teachers. And I just wanted to additionally point out that Comics &amp; More and Christian Reader and his partner have done so much for this community in terms of buying masks and donating them. So thank you for that and for reaching out and expressing your concerns about COVID. We have received a lot of emails in the past week about the budget proposed last Wednesday by Meryl Lashapelle. I have compiled in an effort to summarize, but not to discount any of the voices of the passionate parents and community members we have received. I have tried to summarize the main points and then I'm going to indicate who has emailed with this. I'm going to be upfront that this is going to take me a minute. We have, at the time that I compiled this, eighty-seven different people who have emailed. Some of those folks emailed us more than once, so there were more than eighty-seven emails at various times in the past week, but those are the people in our community who have been contacting us. The overwhelming general sentiment from these emails is that, first of all, gratitude for the school committee and for the community of parents and the administration and Dr. Leclair and Dale, working really hard to get a budget that does not cut positions, passed and through school committee and sort of figured out. That was passed back in March and then again last week. So lots of gratitude from parents for that and expressing their support for that level services budget. And then expressing shock and dismay and devastation in varying levels that the budget that was proposed by the mayor includes significant cuts to that level service budget, particularly in light of knowing how hard that budget that school committee passed was to get to and how many parents had input and what parents particularly valued, including class sizes and educators. And just sort of referencing that no cut in services is in any year feels acceptable when we're talking about our children, but certainly not after the trauma of the past few years in the pandemic, both for educators and for our students. And as we enter a new school, it feels really yucky to be heading into a brand new beautiful school building and then to be cutting educators when we were poised to really make a difference in a really positive way in this community. There were some really thoughtful comments from community members about discussions at the city council level and the finance committee in particular, discussing, you know, step level increases of $8,000 and $10,000 and thinking about if those were to be really considered as a large increase or if those are sort of nickel and dime parts of the budget. And just, you know, comparing that to what the educators in the positions that would be cut at the schools, what that compares, how that compares. Pointing out some of the increases in salary within city government next year, some positions with greater than 10% increase where educators and administrators in our school district are getting 2%. I'm pointing out that cuts to the school hurt the school, of course, the school community, but also the city and the reputation of the city. That cuts are demoralizing for our educators who put their actual lives on the line. And the reference in the email was coming in teaching during COVID. And it feels particularly salient to be saying that tonight, as I know as a parent in the district. You know, as I meet with my children's teachers and they practice lockdowns and all that kind of stuff, literally putting their lives on the line for our children. Referencing that it feels like a very blatant disrespect to Dr. Leclair and to the school committee and to the budget that was passed and the parent participation in that. And referencing that it seems to be a game of chicken being played about reserve funding and whether or not that should be spent on what situation or held in reserves. And just reminding school committee and the city council and the mayor that these are children and educators' lives that are at stake. And then there's some really other thoughtful comments about noting specific increases in varying departments in the city, such as public safety getting a close to 20% increase and general government also close to 20%. Human services over 14% and where education department ranks in that. And finally, the last point made by several parents is that it feels like we've lost sort of a human element here. A parent to administrator, to school committee, to city councillor, to mayor, just discussion of, you know, these are our children and this is what this community values and it's really important to these parents. And urging us to all put aside proving any points or winning any arguments and just considering the district and our children. So these sentiments were shared by, to varying degrees, that was sort of the summary of all of the sentiments shared by Kim Schmidt, Rachel Breton, Tracy Indick, Christina Howard, Lita Barman, Jennifer Lucine, Emily Bilado, Kira Henninger, Joshua Veerson, Heather Dean, Shelby La Bombard, Erin Schwab, Dawn Ackley, Jaclyn Freunier, Sarah Covalli, Michelle Lambert, Nicholas Shepherd, Elizabeth Ryan, Melissa Casey Hino, Chris Korzak, Nancy Deneuse, Allison Keller, Angela St. John, Megan Kellyback, Jason Urban, Claire Void, Erin Hutchinson, Tara Robinson, Leo Ewing, Chris Strong, Joshua Smith, Bethany Clark, Elise Slinger, Judith Dorian, my apologies if I'm mispronouncing any of your names. Someone who just identified themselves as LY by their email address. I won't read their email address here. Kristin Handusch, Gabrielle Cattigan, Richard Weinberg, MB Gowens, Annette Seigel, Kelsey Sleet, Melody Gibberich, Tracy Drawsdahl, Hector Santos, Bethany Hodgman, Deborah Tryon, Mary Frank, Tara Korepta, Dave Jalowitz, Genu Lusick. I'm sorry, my apologies again for mispronunciations. Pat Njepsek, Christina Belfekey, Emily Bova, Morgan Jones, Rachel Page, Amy Kostek, Matsus Marsakidowski, Carrie Haig, Jaclyn Geno, Geno Lusick, again, my apologies. Troy Gray, Evan Zamer, Holly Belial, Carrie Wessel, Anne Halli, Ruth Jay, Moira Sterling, Elena Donnelly, Michaela Parent, Matthew Garland, Jen Abbott, Alexis Nikilian, Taylor Rogers, Bill Brown, Elizabeth Martin, Todd Gogger, Dan Broder, Lindsay Frank, Chelsea Blaze, Jessica Sachs, Heidi Bash, Sarah Hunter, David Beauregard, Natalie Lavert, Chris Cleland, Susan Mason, Alexander Alvarez, Amy Gogger, and Sean Sheehan. At the time that I compiled this, which was a little bit ago, and they are coming in pretty subtly. And that concludes my correspondence to report for this week.
Do we have gifts?
Well, now I have to transfer screens. Hang on. Yes, yes.
That list was quite extensive and I appreciate all the emails that we received.
Yes, thank you to the members of our community for your thoughtful emails. There's a lot of thought that go into those emails clearly and I know I speak for my fellow committee members that we read every single one of them and appreciate them. We do have a gift this week. I'd like to make a motion to approve a list of We the People donations from GoFundMe totaling $11,989. We have approved other donations. Maybe I should give you update after, or maybe I'll give you update now and then I'll say the motion again if I need to for the record. But the update is that if we combine all of the donations, these, this eleven thousand, almost 12,000 plus donations we have already approved as gifts, we are talking about $36,491 from 256 donors. So another really strong showing of support from this community for our schools and for our students and really proud to be able to report that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the $11,989. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'm sure you gladly will. All right, so we'll roll call. Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Meryl Lashapelle?
Meryl Lashapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Marin?
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. And I thank everybody who donated. That's phenomenal. Okay, do we have a student representative update tonight? I did not see Kayla. Let me peek. I am not sure. All right. I do not see a nope. Okay, so Kayla could not make it. All right, then, we are going to open up public speak. So I'm going to ask that you hold your comments to three minutes each time. You only speak once and that you state your name and where you're from. And please let us know if you want to talk. Signal as soon as possible. I will be scrolling through. Okay, I see Jason. So Jason, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm just going to read something that I prepared here. I'm speaking today because I want what's best for these kids and I don't believe the mayor's budget provides this. In speaking with administrators and teachers in Maple, it appears to me that the amount of repair work needed to bring the student population to where they should be for their grade level, both academically and socially, is significant. Funding is needed to navigate this work. Discovery and remediation requires significant resources and to simply ask more of our teachers and administrators with less is not the right thing to do. And frankly, it might not be possible. The people in charge of the care and education of our students are navigating new waters. To do so with less cannot be an option and thank you.
Thank you. Elise?
Thank you to everyone here. I also would like to read something that I jotted down. I did send a letter to the school committee and the city council today that has totally separate information that I will also bring up at future city council finance meetings. But right now, I want to say that I've attended many school committee meetings over the past several years. I've watched Dr. Leclair and her team painstakingly look at what our schools need and then propose a budget that keeps level services in our schools. I sent Dr. Leclair an email asking for info about her decision-making process and despite her busy schedule, she made time to talk with me on the phone. Alternately, I've written to the mayor about the budget, both individually in group emails as well to the school committee and city council with no response, save from someone in her office who denied that cuts to education were ever mentioned by the mayor. After the mayor presented her budget and it was clear that she was planning to give our schools less than we need to even cover the fixed costs we can't control, I decided to look back at past interviews given. Every time Mayor Lashapelle has brought up schools in all of the interviews I could find online, her comments about schools were almost always about buildings. Almost never people. How she has mentioned how we will utilize the old elementary buildings, wondering, and how exciting it is to have the new Mountain View building. I want to remind Mayor Lashapelle right now that these buildings were designed to host children and educators, which again, in light of today's news, is worth mentioning even more. People truly putting their lives on the line every day. What is the point of having a new beautiful building if the people in it are struggling? In what ways do the children, families and educators of East Hampton matter to you if you don't support them financially in adequate ways? Why not communicate your thoughts with the school committee after they presented and voted on their proposed budget? Why give double-digit percentage increases to just about every other department in your proposed budget except for education while we are all still recovering from the pandemic? Why send us all into a panic over the future of our children in this town when you could communicate about your thinking and collaborate instead? I have eagerly voted for you every time you've run for mayor and now I feel like my family and I and all the other families in East Hampton are just distractions and annoyances that take up unwanted space in the buildings that you are so proud of. Please prove me wrong. I am always trying to believe the best in people who have power over me and my family. I'm trying to understand why this has happened in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret?
Hi, my name is Margaret Betts. I am currently the math coach for K to five and I have been a teacher in the district for 15 years. I want to speak directly to you, mayor, to let you know what specific work that happens in our district that is an example of the extreme carefulness that we take to make sure that people who work in our district are working at full tilt. So this is a specific example and something that we are going to miss out on if we can't take the budget forward as the school committee has requested. Cindy Cludier is the music and PE teacher at Maple School. In addition, she does specific tutoring that happens for a group of second graders, forty minutes, five days a week. So we have someone who has a master's in music education, who's also been teaching PE to Maple students, who also now teaches math. Because we saw an opportunity in the schedule to harness her talents as a teacher to utilize them for the benefit of second grade students who are really behind the curve because of the pandemic. One of the things we have requested in this new budget is funding to allow for a math interventionist to be added to the work because we have students who have real deficits that are not because of a disability. They are just because of an opportunity loss because they weren't in schools. And they didn't get the experience. I taught virtually. I know how hard I worked. And yet there are still deficits in my, the students I taught and the students that my hardworking colleagues taught to. We need these positions that have been asked for. They are not fat. They are not bloated requests. These are specific things because we are working at such a high level. So Cindy Cludier's work at that, in just that forty minutes, that's the level that we're willing to ask our staff to work, but we still need more people who are able to do the work to help specific students. This is not about teacher employment. This is specifically about student outcomes and we know that the greatest way we can help a student or a human being is to give them a wonderful and rich education. And I really believe that East Hampton is a place where kids can get that, but they need to have the staff there to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Kira?
Hi. I'm going to turn my video off while I speak just because I'm sitting in the parking lot of the baseball fields and have to put the phone down. But I just want to introduce myself with my camera on. My name is Kira Henninger. I live on Maple Street in East Hampton. I have twin boys in third grade at Maple School. I'm also a school psychologist at an elementary school in a neighboring district. I'm very concerned about the events that have unfolded over the last couple of months. Meryl Lashapelle was present during each and every discussion the finance subcommittee had regarding the budget. She was well aware of the challenges preventing them from keeping the budget under the 3% allocation. Many parents and teachers spoke out and sent emails to the committee. It is clear that the East Hampton community values small class sizes, level services.
Kira, we just lost you. So we'll let Kira finish when she can come back. So Carrie, do you want to start?
I'm here.
Oh.
I'm here.
Will you, we couldn't hear you for a bit.
Did I mute by accident?
It could be, could be. I think you left off at your, I think you muted yourself again. I think you left off that you attended or the mayor attended many meetings?
Yes, thank you. She was well aware of the challenges for being under location. Mayor and teacher then emails the committee. Third, the E and P committee services.
I think we should let Kara know that we can't hear her because she's saying some very valuable things. Maybe if she goes off and comes back on.
Or maybe calls.
Yes.
I'm back. I don't know why that keeps happening.
Try, try leaving the meeting and then calling.
Okay, do you want to let the next person, do you want to let the next person go and then I'll log out and log back in?
Now you're muted, Cindy.
I muted so that we could hear her. Okay, Carrie, we're going to go on with you and then after you will come back to Kira when she can come back. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Wessel. I live on Oliver Street and I'm the mother of a first grader at Pepin. And I was in the list of all the concerned parents that have sent emails, so I'll keep it very short. But I just wanted to say thank you to the school committee and to the city council members that I've heard from and Dr. Leclair for all of your efforts to fund our schools the best that you can. And I know that it's not an easy thing to do. I know that money does not grow on trees, but this is so very important that we have educators to support our buildings and this town wanted those buildings and we want them filled with learning and fun and all of the things that this budget needs to support. And the mayor's budget was shocking and disappointing and the fact that she took it upon herself to make these changes and these cuts that are not numbers, they are people's lives. And it's, it's just unconscionable. And I am so thankful to those of you that are working your very hardest to make this all make sense. I know it's an uphill fight and please know that you have all of our support and gratitude.
Thank you. Kira, hopefully you're back and you can finish your statement and then we'll go on to Scott.
Okay, thank you and I apologize for the bad connection.
Don't worry about it.
So I just want to say it was also highlighted as a particular need for children due to the disruption to instruction and learning from the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. These conversations were extensive and at no point did Mayor Lashapelle contribute. At no point did the mayor offer other suggestions for how to allocate funding for these necessary resources. And at no point did she state that she would not allocate funding for the budget that was voted on unanimously by the school committee. Her actions completely undermined what should have been a collaborative partnership. As the leader of the city, the mayor has an obligation to work with city departments. Instead, the mayor unilaterally made budget decisions without taking into account the hours of conversation between school committee members and the school administrators. The mayor also did not take into account the devastating impact it would have on our school staff and children. The budget process is not a battle to be won. It is a collaboration and finding a way to best support our children. The number one goal and objective written in the mayor's FY23 budget states, "Needs of all learners. We are committed to fostering a culture in which each student experiences equitable access to resources that meet their unique needs." Mayor Lashapelle, your proposed budget fails on its first stated goal. Underfunded schools disproportionately impact the students with the most needs. Families with means will always be able to mitigate the negative impact that underfunding public schools causes with private tutors, private therapists and extracurricular activities. While it may not be your intention While it may not be your intent, your actions will create a greater inequity in access to resources for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott.
Hi, I'm Scott Kavanaugh. I am a fifth grade teacher at Mountain View School. I'm also a parent of a third grader and a first grader at Maple School. I thought I'd have a little time to put something together before I spoke today, but as a busy teacher and a parent, I didn't. So I'm gonna just kind of share a few thoughts that I've been thinking about for the past couple of days. Mayor Nicole LaChapelle, you know I've supported you. In several ways throughout the past few years, even when we disagreed. I've really appreciated you being able to talk to me about those things. And I've been impressed with your leadership and with this, I've been really surprised. I, I know you've heard this from other people, but I just, I need to share my experience as a teacher. In this pandemic, I can tell you that these kids are, are not okay. I was telling my, the, the teacher I teach with, I teach social studies in LA and. I was telling the science and math teacher who I teach with that I was talking today and we, we started counting. The kids we've seen in tears this year and it ended up being about two thirds of our kids. At one point we've seen in tears. These kids are having a really hard time. Pandemic's been hard for all of us, but for no one has it been harder than for these children. And I know that the children that I know you care a lot about. The children that coming from disadvantaged places, lower income children, they're having the hardest time. And I know when we've had other discussions, I know these are kids you care about. And so I, I don't get it. I don't, I don't, I don't get where this is coming from. I, um. I know that in my teaching, I know that when these kids are crying. And these kids are having a hard time, the one thing that makes a big difference is having adults in the room. When it's just me. Feels really, really overwhelming. When I'm able to have more support, when I have the special ed teacher with me, when I have a parent with me who's experienced. And knows what to do, it feels a little more manageable. I definitely at no time this year said, wow, we have too many people in this room to serve these kids well. If these cuts, if this budget means fewer people in these classrooms. We're going in the wrong direction for these kids. And I, it should go without saying that if these kids are not okay. I'm telling you, the teachers I've talked to, these teachers are not okay either. They are working hard and they're committed. This is really hard to take. This, this doesn't feel right as a teacher to have to teach through this pandemic and have this be the response. I. I, I've known you. For a few years and again, I've been really impressed with your leadership. I know you're getting hit with this from a lot of people and I, I want you to know that there is space to reconsider this. I'm open to hearing what you have to say about this. I feel like I haven't heard. I don't know where this is coming from. That's why I think I've been so surprised. But I hope you really take a lot of this in and reconsider because you have the ability to make a really big difference in the lives of these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I do not at this moment see anybody else's hand up, so if you would like to talk, please do so. Give me a signal pretty quickly. I'm gonna scroll through. Megan, if you can also scroll through to make sure. That we don't miss anybody. Again, if you have anything you want to say, please indicate.
I see Jean Libby's hand.
Good. So it says two hands raised. So Jean. And I don't see anybody else, but please just indicate and we'll figure it out. Okay, Jean.
Hi, good evening. I wasn't really planning to talk, but I think that it's important. To add one more voice to this conversation because it's very personal, all of this stuff that's going on. My name's Jean. I live on Oliver Street. I have a daughter who goes to Maple School. I also am the family engagement coordinator for the school district. Which is a position that I started last year very enthusiastically to help continue to build. This positive momentum toward Mountain View School, building parent community. You know, getting to, to draw those connections between teachers and families and kids. That I know are the center of all of our worlds. I moved to East Hampton specifically because I knew that East Hampton was committed to its education. I saw that there was this new high school that had been built recently. And that we saw the, the vote passed to build Mountain View School. And we knew that this would be the place for us to raise our family. We came here because of the schools and you know, now I work for the schools. Like this is, this is so personal that it is our world. And, and I just think that it's really important. I was so surprised how the budget came out. That seemed counterintuitive to what we thought was happening in, in schools. I've been on all these school committee members, or all these school committee meetings for years. And followed very closely along with all of these really difficult decisions. That the school committee handled along with the mayor to address our COVID crisis and we got through that as parents. So I just, I wanted to echo what Scott Kavanaugh just said about how our kids are really not okay. Our, our kids aren't. And our teachers aren't, but I wanted to add in that parents are not okay. Just like Scott talked to his colleague about all of the kids that he's seen cry in classrooms. I cannot name for you one parent who, in East Hampton, who feels like things are going really well for them. Specifically with regard to their kids. Just because things are so intense and so scary right now and, and just feels tight and, and I don't know, confusing. And I don't think that the answer to any of that is fewer adults in the classroom. Or less funding to be able to meet the needs of our kids. Because our kids are the center of our worlds, it affects us personally as parents. So I really, really urge the mayor to reconsider this budget. Think really hard about how not only does it impact our children, but all of their parents and caregivers and loved ones too. Who are all struggling and want the very best for their kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindley.
Hi, I also wasn't going to talk, but I feel like it needs to be said. I live in the center of town and my daughter's a first grader at Pepin. I also have a two-year-old who will be in East Hampton schools. And when I saw the budget cuts, I was very upset. Because these kids are our future. My daughter literally the other day was talking to me about how someday she wanted to work as either a police officer, a firefighter. Something to help people. In order to do that, she needs to get a good education. She needs to have the best ability, the best, you know, chances to get this education. And that isn't going to be done if people are taken out of the classroom. There are times where she's gonna need that one-on-one help and with less people in the classroom, she's not gonna get that. And as the, you know, people have said, kids crying in class, my kid is one of them. She has come home and cried because she feels so overwhelmed and so confused. Her first year in school was pandemic. As a kindergartner, she started on a computer. And I can tell you this right now, my husband and I are not teachers for a reason. I commend all of the teachers out there and I, that's the whole reason I wanted to talk because we need to fight for them. We need these teachers. We need these parents in the classes with our kids. So they can get the best possible education and make a better future for themselves and for the following generations. Thank you.
Thank you. I just realized that somehow the recording paused, so I want to make sure it's still going. It's going. East Hampton Media is, is recording this, but I don't want to lose what we have. Okay, as I'm scrolling through, I do not see anybody else. So if you want to speak, this is the time to indicate. I'm gonna scroll through one more time. I don't want to cut anybody off. If I do not recognize you and you're trying to signal, please unmute yourself and then you can just begin. Okay, it's looking, Megan, are you checking? It's looking like we do not have anybody else.
I don't see any other.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna come back to the, here it go. Last check. All right. I am going to close public speak and I thank everybody for their thoughtful comments and their participation. There were a lot of people in this meeting right now and I always appreciate that. Okay, so let us go on to presentations. And we have a presentation from Dr. Leclerc.
We do, we have, good evening. We have two presentations tonight. The first is on the naloxone box. Which is Narcan and that is being placed in our middle school and high school. In a location where it can be accessed by the public. So Rebecca Edwards from the Healthy Youth Coalition is here this evening. Just to talk a little bit about that and hopefully address any fears or concerns that people have about that. And then we'll, we're taking a break for a few minutes from the budget and then. For after Rebecca's presentation, we will open up a discussion around the budget. And I do have some comments to make and then we'll hear from other members of the school committee. So Rebecca, I see you on my screen, so welcome. And you're giving us a little breather from a, from a tense budget discussion, so, so welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, this, this has been somewhat of a heavy meeting and naloxone isn't the lightest topic to follow it up with a break. But here I am. Thank you for having me. I'm Rebecca Edwards from the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. I have to say that just hearing parents talk about how much they love and care for their kids. And, and just that their children are the center, center of their worlds. It's just, I love East Hampton and I really appreciate that sentiment and hearing it over and over again from parents. This is a really beautiful community. It's a really beautiful community. So thank you for everyone showing up tonight on behalf of your young people. We are a coalition focused on young people and specifically substance use prevention. And we would love for you to join us when you see initiatives that, that you're interested in getting involved in. Follow us on Facebook or join our mailing list or just email me and we'd really love to garner all of this love for our young people. And help, help it guide our work. So tonight we're here because the, the Health Department, along with Hampshire Hope and. Other collaborators in town, the Police Department, the Fire Department. We are installing naloxone boxes in city buildings, in 50 p. sen and at the library. And also they're in the schools and we're gonna be starting to expand. Expand the program to other places in the city to provide access. I, Wendy Penner is here with me. She's from Hampshire Hope to, just in case there are other questions that she would be better fit to answer. And I did bring some slides. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Yes, so then. All right, you should be able to do so now.
Okay, can, can you see my screen or do I have to share it? I have to say it, don't I?
You have to share.
Okay, share screen. Let's see.
Yep, there we go. All right, we can see it.
There we go, wonderful. So this is what an naloxone box looks like. This is the one hanging at 50 p. sen on the second floor by the restrooms. I wanted to show a slide of what happens when the body is overdosing on an opioid. The body has opioid receptors in the brain. They're the same receptors that control breathing and an opioid, when it is ingested into the body, it comes and sits on that receptor. And then if you administer Narcan to somebody or naloxone. Narcan is like the brand name for naloxone. So if you've heard the, the word Narcan, it's basically the brand. Naloxone is the generic name for it. So the naloxone comes in and it basically kicks the opioid off and sits on that receptor. So that's how the, then it, it restores the breathing of the person by, by getting the opioid off of the receptor. It restores the breathing. So administering Narcan reverses the effects of an overdose. Some of the most important things to know is that it is safe to administer Narcan even if somebody isn't overdosing. So for example, we were just speaking with Chief Norris, the fire chief today. And he said that if they come upon a responsive person, sometimes in trying to revive that person, they'll administer Narcan. Because they know that nothing bad will happen and maybe something good will come of it. So, um. This is a short video. Let's see if this works. This is a short video that our public health nurse made for how to administer Narcan.
As you can tell, we're installing stuff in Narcan boxes and I'm gonna divide it with the board. To start, the event of an opioid overdose, you should call my level and provide your medication. You then open the box between the lever to the left. There's no lock or alarm. The box simply opens. You will move the Narcan head directly off. If somebody's in an opioid overdose, you should look for signs and symptoms of constricted pupils, irregular or shallow breathing, or no breathing at all. Fingertips and lips that are blue and they will be unresponsive to stimuli, whether that be painful or shaking. You open the back of the Narcan. Place your fingertips on each side and the thumb on the lever in the middle. This is a training to provide an example. You stick the tip of it into the nostrils until your fingertips touch the edge. And you press the lever until you hear a flick and the medication will be dispensed. You then can provide rescue breathing by providing one breath every six seconds or placing the individual sideways. A second dose of Narcan can be given in the opposite nostril every two to three minutes. There are no harmful effects to giving Narcan in the event that somebody is not in an overdose and you suspect that they were. If you have any other questions, you can feel free to reach out to the East Hampton Health Department and we're more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you for taking one step forward and helping our community in the event of an opioid overdose. Hi everybody, I'm Bridgette East Hampton, Public Health.
Ah, you can stop for good, okay. So some people might ask, why are we making Narcan accessible in schools? And that's a very good question. It's our, it was always accessible through the, through the nurse's office. But sometimes if the nurse is not present, then that would make that medicine unavailable. And so that is why we want, that we're installing these naloxone boxes by the AEDs. Because these are, this is a life-saving medicine, just like an AED is a life-saving machine. So. Unfortunately, opioids are becoming much scarier in our culture. And there is a substance called fentanyl that's becoming more and more pervasive in our society. So there was a middle schooler who overdosed in school in Connecticut this year because of fentanyl. And two other of his students were rushed to the hospital along with that, that student. These are some facts that came out recently from National Fentanyl Awareness Day. Practically all of the pills seized by law enforcement are fake and forty percent contain a potentially lethal amount of fentanyl. Practically all of the pills seized by law enforcement are fake and 40% contain a potentially lethal amount of fentanyl. Fentanyl is involved in more American youth drug deaths than heroin, meth, cocaine, benzos and prescription drugs combined. This has been in the news quite a bit recently. Fake pills have been found in all 50 states, assuming any prescription medicine you see online is fake. Assume any prescription that you see online is fake. And illegally made fentanyl is the primary driver of the recent increase in all overdose deaths. Fentanyl-involved deaths are faster growing among 14 to 23-year-olds. So this is the research, the numbers that have become, that have been coming out recently. It's very, very scary. This is a picture that the, the state Police Department posted. They're, they seized all of these drugs that some of them look like candy as you can see. And some of them are fake prescription pills that very well could contain fentanyl in them. And this was in Massachusetts very recently. So we are very afraid of this growing problem. And as a coalition, we're focusing on providing more education around it. We have a training coming up on June 13th from 7:00 to 8:00 PM at Learning to Cope. It will be a, a training to teach people how to administer Narcan and also how to have conversations with our youth about, about substances. I just had a conversation with my five-year-old about not taking candy from a friend because sometimes candy has medicine in it and we have to ask a grown-up before we have a piece of candy that was just given to us. So these are conversations we can have with young people at any age, as long as it's an age-appropriate conversation. And I think as a community, we need to talk about how to have those conversations. So please attend this training if you're interested in learning about it, but this is why we have Narcan placed in the schools. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you.
How do I unshare my screen?
There you did, you just did.
Oh, there we go.
You're, you gotta close one more thing down, but there you go, perfect. Perfect, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions they want to ask before I mute myself again?
So Rebecca, I just wanted to confirm that these are installed in our middle school and our high school for families that are wondering if it's going to happen in the future or if it's already happened.
The last, I believe they are installed, the last I had heard was a while ago from the middle school that they needed special screws, but like it was in the process of being installed and I have seen it up in the high school already.
Thank you.
Megan?
Yeah, I, I, two things. I just wanted to really commend the city and the coalition, Rebecca, and, and everyone for putting these into place. This is a really strong scientifically backed, there's tons of evidence on harm reduction that this works really well to save lives. I don't think we have to belabor the, the increase in overdose deaths, but it's skyrocketing, yes, right here in Massachusetts along the highway corridor. And so I'm just so grateful that I live in a progressive community that understands the science of harm reduction and has put these into place. So that, that's really great. And thank you for coming and, and sort of alleviating potential concerns that perhaps some parents have. I wanted to ask, so the, the boxes are open and students who maybe have a family member or a friend who uses could, in theory, like go during the day, get Narcan and then have it with them. You know, if they, you know, suspected that might be like a situation at home that they might encounter later. Is that correct? And then boxes are continually restocked?
Yes, that is one of the benefits to having them up both in the school and around the city is that they are free for anybody to open the box and take Narcan. That's part of why they're there. So that, so that if anyone has a loved one or family member they're worried about, just take, please take it and keep it so that you have the power to administer that life-saving medicine. Yes. And I'll say again that if a young person were to administer Narcan on somebody that was not experiencing an overdose, nothing would happen. It does not have any adverse effects. So it is safe for someone who is not, not going through an overdose and it, it's safe and life-saving for somebody who is.
That's an important point. Thank you, thank you. I think that's just really great. We don't know everyone's situation and what they're facing when they go home and what sort of situations they're in. And I just, this is such a great resource for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and the other thing I don't think I answered, but, but will, is that the boxes are monitored. So everywhere that has a box, there's a partner agreement essentially. And so they are taking the responsibility to monitor those boxes. And so if there's, if a Narcan was taken, then it will be replenished.
Any other questions? I just want to say, I, I, I wish we didn't need these, but I am so absolutely grateful that we have them. Because unfortunately overdoses are really horrific and they're multiplying. And so anything we can do to stop this and save a life is phenomenal. So I thank you very much and I'm really grateful that we have these.
Thanks so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay.
So I'm going to just read something as we open up the discussion about the budget. I prepared a document with the support of the leadership team. We met for several hours this morning. And these were some of the thoughts they wanted me to share. Many of them are on the call tonight. This is, you know, very disturbing news to them to hear about the budget. And as, as you've heard from many educators tonight as well and family members. As the Superintendent of East Hampton Public Schools, it's important for me to make a statement this evening. And I'm just looking at my, my other computer screen, so forgive me. As a veteran educator with over 35 years of experience, I can honestly say that our profession has just been through the most challenging time ever due to the pandemic. I do not think anyone would dispute the fact that providing an education for young people in our community was daunting, but we did it. We showed up, returning to classes and offices long before others in the city did. We navigated countless detours along the way. And whether you agree or disagree with our decisions, we put forward a solid educational program. Now I know that we're not the only essential workers that showed up in East Hampton every day. And other departments in our city deserve recognition, praise and financial support for the demanding work and sacrifice that they put forward. To the average family, sending children to school for, for return brought us back to some level of normalcy for them. But school was not typical for us. You may not realize all the shifts we made in programming, staffing and support due to the deficits that students returned to school with. Our staff supported children with academic and social deficits and worked tirelessly with families that were scared, frustrated and angry every day. Teaching is not a career for the faint of heart and our teachers are the greatest asset to our district. Unlike other essential workers who may be reaching a phase in their career that goes back to pre-pandemic levels, education will experience repercussions related to the pandemic for years. Children still have gaps in education and academic intervention is essential for them to reach their potential. And the social and emotional challenges of being isolated for so long during the pandemic has an overwhelming impact on our children and working through that will take years. We adjusted to decreases in our budget repeatedly. But to not fully fund our moderate education budget at this time in our community is beyond comprehension. At a critical time in our schools, to expect us to eliminate teachers and needed academic interventions will have, have a negative impact on the students we serve. This cut will impact all staff, students and families, but most of all our vulnerable students who really need the academic and therapeutic support to succeed in school. What the city is asking of the school department will impact the entire educational experience. Now I know some citizens and council members had inquiries and I would like to address some of them. Number one, the district did not receive ARPA funds from the federal government. ARPA funds went directly to the city and we did not receive any funds. The district did get reimbursed for approximately $240,000 of expenses in the early phase of the pandemic through the city through CARES and FEMA reimbursement programs. The city was also generous enough to purchase a vehicle for the maintenance director through CARES funds early on in the pandemic. We acknowledge and appreciate all that support. Also, we have received three ESER grants, ESER 1, ESER 2 and ESER 3, which is funding to support our schools that is supposed to be allocated towards COVID pandemic issues. ESER 1 funding supported the district in the FY21 budget. It was used and it's gone. ESER 2 funding supported the district in this current fiscal year, FY22, and helped us fill a $450,000 deficit, which was a cut from the district budget last year, if you recall. We shared information on numerous occasions about how ESER 1 and ESER 2 were spent, but I have a list and I'm, I'll just mention, we spent the majority of it on staffing, funding positions that we needed, like additional nurses, paraeducators particularly to support some of our most vulnerable students in ELL, a math instructional coach, technology integration specialist. We also spent it on a special education teacher, a community engagement coordinator. And then we also had to backfill, which is part of that $450,000, positions in our budget, including a media specialist, an admin assistant, a district technology person. And I can give a clear list to anyone that wants it, but we spent some of that ESER money on tents. People remember all the tent discussions, tent rentals, tent purchases, summer school transportation, stipends for staff during hybrid learning when we had staff and custodians in the building, even when there was a state of emergency from the governor. So we've, and we did a lot of curriculum purchases for resources that we needed during the pandemic, particularly online resources. I'm happy to provide that information to anyone that asks because I'm, we've been transparent about it all along at several occasions. Regarding ESER 3 funding, which is the only grant that we'll have left starting next year, it's the funding source that we have, it's the largest grant, it's 1.6 million. And our intent is to distribute half of the funds this coming year and half of the funds in FY24 because we're trying to be responsible and spread the funding out. Again, I've shared what we're using the ESER 3 funds for in numerous presentations. It's in the district budget presentation. There's a slide which has been available on our website for several weeks. When we use ESER dollars to offset the operating budget, then it does not get used for the emergency services created by the pandemic for which it was intended. We are put in a position that removes our ability to respond effectively to the outcomes of COVID and focus ESER dollars on what is genuinely needed by our students. Regarding our school reserves, I know people have questions about that. So let me put some comments out there to increase the community's understanding. Our reserves function as our school's stabilization fund and they serve to ensure we have a place to get funding in an emergency. That's their purpose. Our practice has been that the S, the school committee strives to maintain a reserve equal to the prior year's grant monies received. This is a common practice done in many districts. If we remove ESER 3 from that funding equation, because that was a one-time allocation, that leaves us with a reserve of about $1 million, which is approximately a year's worth of grants. We budgeted to use $1 million in reserves against this FY23 budget, which leaves $1 million to do the same against the FY24 budget. I would also point out that mass.gov recommends that cities and towns maintain 3% to 5% of their operating expenses in free cash. The school department mirrors that practice, understanding that the city has not been able to cover the entire school department operating budget for several years. It's important to understand that we are using the highest amount ever in FY23, while all the reserve revenue has been declining significantly over the past few years. So some final thoughts. Last year, I would point out that the school department made up 64% of the city budget. This year it is 61%, so it has decreased. Reducing our budget at any level is a loss to the children we serve. It's also a loss to some of the hardest-working, essential employees in our community. Any reduction makes their job harder. Creating fewer academic interventions, less social emotional support, less after-school programs, anything makes it more challenging for the people left behind to do the job, as Scott Kavanaugh stated. It has been known and discussed for years that moving to the new school would substantially increase our transportation needs. While we once, while this year we had 235 students at the elementary level that qualified for bus transportation in our neighborhood schools, we will now have almost 550 that will qualify, which is more than double. I've made this point before. This is not optional. It is the law. We must provide this service to children. This should not be a surprise. We always knew that there would be a cost associated with this move. Why are we not fully funding transportation? Building a school budget is not as simple as other city departments when they build their budget. We as school leaders work with the finance subcommittee of the school committee and we answer to the families in the district. Our decisions are not made in isolation. We spend hours developing scenarios, costing them out, reviewing changes, holding public meetings, holding leadership meetings, having discussions with union members. It takes almost 10 weeks to form our budget, present it to the school committee and get approval. Is this it? All the hours and work we've put into this budget, checking along the way to make sure we were on the right path. Can a decision be made with no warning or discussion, no emails? And that's it. This seems unfair to me and it seems unfair to the staff and families that participated in meetings, wrote emails, spoke up. Was this all for nothing? Early in the budget, the district proposed eliminating three teachers at the elementary level and the outpouring of family and staff feedback advocating for smaller class sizes led us to make changes in our budget. We went back, took a hard look at our budget and made changes. To all the parents and staff that had a voice in shaping the budget, are they to be forgotten? It seems like there should be some opportunity to take a good look at what we are requesting and fully fund our budget. The educators and the families of East Hampton deserve so much more than what The educators and the families of East Hampton deserve so much more than what we even asked for. Our schools put forward a moderate budget every year, and we do not go back to the city council for any further appropriations during the year. We use our reserves. I will be asking the city council and the mayor to respectfully reconsider the school budget request this year. Thank you.
Thank you. So I am assuming that we all have a lot to say that we want to share. Is there anybody who would like to go first? Okay, Maryn.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Allison, for your points. There's a lot of really important facts and data points in what you just spoke to and why we had to reach the budget that we did. And we have made that throughout the last three months and offer that information to the city and to the mayor throughout this time. We have done our work. The school committee has done its work. We've spent months leading up to the point where we had to pass our budget twice unanimously, offering a budget that was clearly offered with reasons, with facts, and with all of the information that we needed to present out to say why we needed this budget, why we needed this increase, and why this was the time to make up for past years where this mayor has chosen to repeatedly cut our budget and not provide level funding. We have had a 0, excuse me, 0.79% budget. We have a 0.76 budget. We have had a negative 2.5 budget, and in each of those years, the union had a 2% increase. So there is no way to be able to provide our teachers a cost of living increase and have that level of cuts year after year and not have significant impact on our community. This was the year to finally rebalance our budget. Unfortunately, from what I can tell, the mayor did not do her work. The mayor did not offer leadership, to offer collaboration, to offer conversation, to have discussion about the budget. It has been known for months, after each of our meetings, notes were offered from our finance subcommittee meetings that offered the conversations that we were having. The information was provided to the school committee. If the mayor read those notes, then none of our facts, none of our numbers would have been a surprise. Did she offer feedback? Did she engage us in conversation leading up to the passing of our budget? No, not once. Did she reach out to us? Not once. Did she try to have conversation? Not once did she offer any suggestions that she might not be able to meet the needs and the request of our budget. So what I ask now is that the city council, who is the next step in this process, do their work. This is an unprecedented time. This is a time to say to this mayor, no, this budget is not acceptable. You need to turn down this budget. We need to go back to the negotiating table, the finance subcommittee, the full committee, school committee, the superintendent, all of us are willing to negotiate and have a conversation how we can move forward together as this part of this city and as a part of this overall budget. I think there's one other really important fact here, and Dr. Leclerc mentioned some of this, but there's an important piece here, too. This current budget, people at the newspaper, has listed as a 4.6% increase. That is the operating budget that is getting a little bit additional funding. The actual budget increase to the overall school funding is less than 1%. It is 0.79% overall increase to the education of this city. Now, some of that funds is because our budget has, the overall budget has include, is, has less debt this year to pay for the new building. But that funds, when you, especially when you compare to all of the other increases, a 0.78% increase to school education at a time of crisis in our community is completely and utterly unacceptable. And so I ask the city council, you are now the next step. This is your time to stand up and to say, no, this budget is not acceptable. You need to reject this budget. You need to come back and help all of us, negotiate, and find a better solution that works for everybody in this community. It's what is critical for our community. It's critical for our youngest members who are still in our schools. Now is a time to step up and say, no, this budget is not acceptable. And when you do speak, Mayor LaChapelle, I would love for you to comment on which eight positions you think best we should cut, since you did directly put in your budget a line that would slash over $326,000 out of what we had requested for salaries. So your position, from what I can tell from the numbers, is that we should be cutting positions. So please, when you do speak, tell us which eight positions you think we should best cut. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next? All right, well, then I will start. Okay. So first of all, thank you to all the families who have attended our finance subcommittee meetings, our school committee meetings, and really have a real solid understanding of our school district. We love the participation. We love the fact that you're so savvy about these things now. It's wonderful. I love to see the involvement. All right, we have made it clear since early on that we had a transportation issue. We knew that when we were building the school, and we have worked on it. Dr. Leclerc has been very open about how, making estimates as to what did we do to our budget. We were also made aware, and again, I want to remind everybody, the mayor is a voting member of our team. The mayor is here every time and listening and getting the exact same information that all of us are getting. So we have looked at the transportation costs going up. We have looked at the tuitions going up, and we have really always had a clear understanding of how those ESER 1, 2, and 3 monies were spent and were going to be spent. This is not something, the school budget is a very complicated budget. It really is. Megan is on the subcommittee now getting a real look at the budget, and it's complicated, okay? It is many lines, many grants, money coming in, money coming out, new programs, but it is really staff-driven. Schools cannot operate without teachers. You can't. You need teachers. You need parents. And so if you look at our budget, yes, we are the biggest part of the East Hampton budget. I get that, but that's because we are serving our families and our children. We are, you know, staff-driven. If you look at our particular budget, the biggest part of our budget is staff. Historically, the mayor has always communicated with us. The mayor has been an active voicing, communicative team member. And it is only this year that we have not had communication about the budget. The only thing the mayor has said in past is ask for the budget you need, and the mayor has never commented on the problems we are going to face with tuition and transportation or anything else that we were talking about as we went along. I, that shocks me. I have been the chair for quite some time. I have been part of finance subcommittee. I have worked with the mayor very closely, and this is the first time that we don't have communication. I find that astounding. March 22nd, the mayor was fully aware of what we were asking, but to be honest, the mayor has been aware of what we needed way before March 22nd. After March 22nd, I would have thought if there was a major problem and we were not going to be able to fund our budget, I would have thought that the mayor would contact us and let us know what she was thinking and what the issues were. We heard nothing. The first we heard of it was city council meeting when we heard that we were going to get much less than what, what we asked for. The next day, I looked at where the mayor proposed those cuts, and it was very clearly in the staff line, and our savvy parents, as well as anybody else who wanted to figure out what that staff cut would be, came up with a minimum of five and five to eight positions. That is appalling. I am surprised, I'm going to be honest. The mayor has always said, do not cut staff. Always. Do not cut staff. This is the first time I'm looking at a budget where the mayor is actually rewriting the staff line with a massive cut of five to eight teachers. I don't understand. That is a massive change. It is horrible. During a pandemic, the mayor has been a part of all our conversations about the social emotional needs of our students, the amount of learning that was lost. I am a teacher. Lori is a teacher. We know very closely the impact of this pandemic, but Mayor LaChapelle also has an education background and can hear that and envision that. So I do not understand the recommendation for staff. I will tell you that when I got this information, I immediately emailed the mayor and told her my concerns and my astonishment at her cuts, and I CC'd all of the city councillors because I have said this in the past, we need the city's help. Maryn, Dr. Leclerc, and I have gone to the city council finance subcommittee meetings, and we have asked for help in the past, and we desperately need help this time. So then I spent the weekend calling and having very long, and I thank every city councillor who got back to me, very long conversations with all the city councillors. There was only one that I haven't heard from, but everybody else was open and listening and engaged and trying to come up with ideas for how we can do this. So here's my take on this. Number one, I am still wondering what the mayor is thinking in terms of these cuts. I have absolutely no idea, and I do not understand the change in policy to say that you should cut staff. Two, I will tell you, we are going to work with city council. The message I gave this weekend to city council is I am really hoping that the mayor, city council, and the school committee get together and have a huge meeting and figure this problem out and solve it. Because in all honesty, if you look at who we are, we are a city, and we are supposed to be working as a team. We are not adversaries. We are not trying to be greedy and take more than our share. We have been very open about the needs that we have, and we need to work as a team. And there are, I'm very grateful, there are a number of city councillors on this meeting tonight, so I thank you for attending. We need to be a team. We are not going to simply accept this budget. We cannot because it is devastating to our schools. And I will tell you, we are going to fight to not get rid of staff, and everybody knows that. But here's what they don't necessarily know. The mayor, Dr. Leclerc already mentioned that we are already committing $1 million to make sure that we ask for the tiniest budget. There is this idea that our reserves are potable, that we just sit on and protect. That is the absolutely wrong. And Dr. Leclerc did a really nice job of explaining what those are for, but I want to give a couple of other pieces of information that you might not be aware of. The mayor, we have gone to the city council to ask for, in years when we have been cut, we have asked for special appropriation money or commitment that should unexpected things happen. We would be able to get funding from the city. Now, every other department does that. They have, there's $961,000 in free cash. If it's the DPW or Public Safety, and they get the jam, they come to city council, the mayor approves the special appropriation, the city council looks at it, and almost always, it gets passed. The school committee has never been able to do that. The mayor has always said that the mayor will not even look at a special appropriation unless we drain our reserve strike. We have none, all right? But the mayor has also not then said, I will take care of all the extra pieces of the puzzle if you run out of money. And when I talked to the city council this weekend, they were very concerned. They were very much willing to help us. But one of the things they said, which was really important, is there's $961,000, but there is other departments depend on that money and come back to the well? So there is a good chance that we could drain our budget dry. And we could come then to city council, and they say, sorry, the money's gone. There is none. So we can't give you that extra money that you want. So the idea of just willy-nilly draining our reserves is dangerous because it's a good way to kill a school system. One of the examples that we have of, because some of the city councillors asked, what would you use the reserves for? Well, this year, we had five unexpected placements of students, all right? They were not in the budget, and they required us to pay an average of $75,000 per student. There was one student who ended up costing our district $212,000. And I have told city council, and the mayor is well aware of this, if you take these figures and you multiply by the number of students that we use, that is a huge chunk of money. We cannot afford not to have a cushion. We cannot afford a lawsuit because we say to a family moving in with a child with high needs, sorry, we're not going to take care of it. We are legally bound to do this. This is why we have a reserve. The idea of just using our reserve so that in the end, we can come and hope for a little bit of money is absolutely not going to work, okay? We have no guarantee that we're going to be able to get it. We have no guarantee that at the end that there'll be any money left because if DPW or Public Safety has come and needed the money and taken it, and there's nothing left in the well, well, then I don't know what we're going to do. So I am an eternal optimist. I am also someone who believes that if we all work together, we have some very smart, brilliant people in this city, of which the mayor is one of them. We work together. We come up with a team approach to solve this problem. I believe we can do it. I do not want to be an adversary, but I will tell you, right now, I'm not able to understand what's going on or feel like we're communicating. So I'm going to ask for a reset. I'm going to ask for a reset that calls for the mayor, city council, and school committee to get together and put our heads together, figure this out, and solve the problem. I'm not going to walk away from this school. We built, we built a great school. I'm very excited. We have lived through a pandemic, and I think, quite honestly, this is a stress that we shouldn't all be facing now. I really wanted to be able to get to the end of this year and say to families, hey, we made it. We made it through the year. We did it together. We made it through the worst parts of the We made it through the worst parts of the pandemic. I'm hoping for a wonderful fall. I'm hoping for a great come next year. But thank you all for your support. We made it. And instead, what we're doing is we are having a conversation about who we are going to send out the door. What person is not valuable enough to keep in our school? No, I agree with Marin. We cannot accept this budget that the mayor has proposed. I cannot accept it. I will fight this and I will beg city councillors. I will beg the mayor. I will beg this finance subcommittee to meet with us, put their heads together and come up with a much better solution. We can't do this. Lori?
Cindy, I appreciate your eternal optimism. I value that so much in you. I value my colleagues who have spoken here this evening. Marin, I know how hard you have worked on this budget. Megan and Cindy, you've joined him in that. Dr. Leclerc, I appreciate all of your words. For anyone who has listened to me either in person or during these Zoom sessions for the five years that I have been on school committee, there have been very few times that I'm speechless. And right now, I'm speechless and I've been brought to tears many times this evening. I don't want to appear to be overly dramatic. I'm exhausted, as many are in this meeting this evening. I have been an educator for more than thirty years. I joined school committee because I believe in public ed- education. I've said that many times. I had some prepared remarks, but listening to the remarks of other people just want to make me crumble that up because all of the words said here tonight are so important to me and touch my heart, and that's why I'm in tears. Did anyone listen to when one of our seasoned teachers, Margaret Betts, talked about another teacher who has actually taught physical education? Wait, I was taking notes, music and math. Does anyone realize the challenges that that individual faced? Dealing with children who have more social emotional needs than we ever could have imagined. As I said, I am a teacher. I am in the trenches every day. I see what this has, this pandemic has done to students across this country, across the world. We cannot have fewer resources in line for students nor for our educators. We are so lucky to have the teachers that we have in East Hampton. But any teacher who hears that there will be cuts is going to go on to school spring right now if they haven't done so, and they're going to send their resumes if they do not have professional status. We are going to lose amazing teachers because of this decision. This talk that I'm giving right now is also very difficult for me because Mayor Nicole LaChapelle has been a friend of mine for many years. But this relationship that the school committee has with her has become contentious and combative. I was flabbergasted to hear what she did to the proposed budget that was done with such care. Because I know that she is a good human being and I know that she cares about education. But these decisions that she has made does not illustrate that. We have got to work together as a team. In the district where I teach, the mayor is actually chair of the school committee. This type of thing would not happen there. I am not saying that every district does not have budget problems. But what is happening now cannot continue to occur. I agree that we should get together with city council. We have to sit down with the mayor. We have to hear from you, Mayor LaChapelle, to understand why you have made these decisions that are so deleterious to our community. I need to hear it from you. We all need to hear it from you. Because as far as I'm concerned, there really is no reason to do so at this time. We can do other things to make the budget work. I've also asked many times, I've asked you. We opened up many cannabis facilities in this city. I have heard that we cannot use cannabis funding to support education. But there is no reason why we cannot use cannabis funds to cover some of the other expenses in the city and allow other funds to support and educate our youth. The most important community members that we have because they are our future. Isn't it ironic that I have gone across this state as a teacher? And I have fought, I have held signs to fund our future. And now, as a school committee member, I am begging our mayor, I am begging our city council to fund the future of our East Hampton youth. Please listen, we must get together. We must not threaten the livelihood of our educators who are going to look for other jobs and we must service our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Um, I uh, I've been moved as well by like the, the parents who spoke tonight. Um, as well as um, Dr. Leclerc and Marin and Cynthia. It's such a like a persuasive and moving set of facts that you're presenting. Um, and I'm very appreciative. And I also, I just want to thank parents who I've spoken to over the last week. Um, whether it be at the Maple Playground or through lots of different kinds of text communication. It's just people are very animated and very activated by this. Extremely concerned uh, and worried about the future of their children. And so I think anything that I have to say is coming from the perspective of like, I feel like I've been in the trenches a little bit with, with, with parents. Um, but I really want to thank them for their invaluable perspectives and testimony. And I'm very grateful that they've been so responsive. It's extremely inspiring. But I keep, I keep thinking about the idea that uh, we fund what we value. And I feel as though we are sending a signal that we do not value education. Uh, and that is actually pretty common in America. There's not, there's nothing that that's, that's so unusual about that. But it's really disappointing that in a place that sort of identifies itself as progressive or wants to believe that it has its cards in the right place, can't do this. This is, this feels like a basic move. And it's not even uh, that much. I feel like the difference between four point six three and seven point nine one uh, doesn't feel so huge to me. And I feel like even at the beginning, the first budget, the one that was presented was already scraping the bottom of the barrel. This was like miniscule and it's incredibly painful that we can't find a way to make this thing work for East Hampton. And I know that I am biased. I'm a parent in the district. Um, and I'm an educator. I've been an educator in public schools for more than twenty years. I'm a school committee member and I view the health and wellness of a city from the children out. I, I feel like things start with kids and then you build from there. And that's my, that's my vantage point. But um, as, as somebody who's had like the incredible fortune of meeting and getting to know like dozens of skilled and experienced educators and administrators here in East Hampton. Uh, I mean, these are, these are people who have chosen to work here and they dedicate their professional careers to supporting our kids and our families. Um, the fact that we are sort of being forced to let some of these people go uh, because we have chosen not to fund the schools is, it feels like a self inflicted wound. And even if we somehow don't let them go, I feel very angry that like they've been forced to ride this emotional roller coaster and not know for sure where their futures will lie. That's a bad look. That's a bad look for, for this district. And I, and I don't think it's, it's necessary. It feels like it's only hurting us. And I, and so just last but not least, I feel like um, being a teacher in, in public schools in America in twenty twenty two, it's like an impossible job. Uh, are these teachers here in East Hampton? They're the most dedicated, thoughtful, like insightful, compassionate people you'll ever meet. How can we not respect them like this? Um, and I'm very worried about the future because I feel like once these people are gone, they're gone. They're gone and they're not coming back because there is not a stable of like peppy, ready to go teachers waiting in the wings. They're just, it's not there. This is a profession that is really struggling. And I think we need to prize and prioritize and honor the people who are here. We're playing with fire in East Hampton and it's a bad situation for kids in East Hampton. So yeah, we fund what we value. Um, uh, the budget doesn't value education. It's a, it feels like it devastates and I really hope that we can come together. I, I love this idea of like, school committee, city council, mayor, parents, the public, whatever, whoever can get involved here to make this thing work. Because we can make this work. It does not have to be like this. Thanks.
Thank you. Megan?
Uh, thank you. Um, and thank you to my colleagues for um, all of the things that you've said. I really um, echo all of your statements. I appreciate what you have said. And I won't restate the things that they've said because they said it so well. And I just um, want to, to lend my support to their statements. I do want to add a couple of words about my experience here and um, my perspective on things. It's really hard to come onto this meeting tonight and in the past week to interact with parents and reconcile um, the amount of time that they have poured into this budget process already and that we have poured into this budget process already. The amount of time and heart um, and passion and effort. The parents have showed up big time. This community has been deeply invested for months. Um, and we've worked really hard and it was not easy. It's not like we all just came together and said, yay, we have this really great idea. We're going to just ask for seven point nine percent and go forward. Um, this was really hard fought and we, we came together. And I know um, what came out of that process is a deep respect between the administration, between uh, Dale and uh, Dr. Leclerc and the administrators and the parents. And I know that there's mutual back and forths, understanding and support there of this is a person and a, a leadership team that is um, responsive to what values the parents in this community have. Um, and what our children need. And the people who know what our children need are the teachers and the parents. And we have heard loud and clear what our children need. The parents, um, you know, that our children are not okay, our teachers are not okay. And um, I, I appreciate Jeanne Vee um, adding on there, the parents are not okay. This is, and, and to add on top of all of that, um, the hours and hours of work that a, a group of parents in this community are pouring into reading and rereading and looking at every single number in the school committee budget and the city proposed budget. And uh, this year's, um, and last year's and year before. I mean, it is just an astounding amount of volunteer work um, from dedicated parents and members of this community that um, it's really inspiring. Um, I'm disappointed by what's going on. And I'm also a little bit angry on, on their behalf and on my behalf for the hours that we have and the time and the heart that we have put into this and where this has ended up. Um, so, so again, you know, I just really want to echo what my colleague said and, and we have to say no. And I know that the parents in this community are going to continue to push really hard. And I hope they know that we are just as disappointed, school committee, administration, just as disappointed, just as um, committed to this. Um, we are going to work and do all that we can and we want you to keep showing up with us. Um, I, I had some statements I prepared about um, the reserves. And since we said so much about those tonight, I, I don't think I have anything original to add to that. I just really want to um, highlight that the reserves. Um, it's not that East Hampton does anything that's not standard. Um, that East Hampton is sitting on any money. Uh, this is standard operating, that you have to leave money in this fund. And we have referred over and over again to the money that is set aside as a sort of a reserve for the city. And it's um, baffling that there would be a different expectation for the school district. That money, um, you can look in all of the budgets, year after year, at how that money is used to keep level services. Um, it just, it, it baffles me. Um, so I, I'll just wrap up and say, city councillors, uh, please, please, as, as Marin, um, so well put, please continue to fight and help us uh, fund our schools for next year. Please do not rubber stamp the rest of the budget and, and leave the education um, to be figured out. Um, let's look at all of this together um, for the entire city, all of the departments and not, and not move the other departments along until we've figured this out. Um, and I look forward to hearing um, Mayor LaChapelle, what you have to say about all of this. And I, I really hope that you have suggestions for us about how we proceed and how we make next year work without draining a reserves fund that we can't drain, that we cannot drain. Um, it's not standard, other districts around us don't do it. We, we cannot do that. Um, and so I, I really look forward to hearing what your um, suggestions are for us as we move forward to next year and avoid, to avoid losing teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I will say that um, I know Marin, Megan and I fully intend to go to as many city council meetings as possible and keep talking to the city councillors and hopefully the mayor about what can be done. Um, I know that the easy solution is to say that nothing can be done. But I also know that very smart, very creative people can look at all the different possibilities and come up with a way for us to do this better. And this is the year, someone said that, and you know, I, I have so many pieces of paper. I'm taking notes of all the wonderful things people are saying. Um, somebody said, this is the year to do it. This is the year that we are coming out of a pandemic, but we're still suffering from that pandemic. And our students and our families and our staff are suffering. This is not the year to cut us. It is not, okay? The idea is, oh, well, maybe we'll have to do that down the road. I understand that. But we, someone also said, we're going to be looking at these problems for years. And I agree. I am a teacher and I see the devastating effect on my students that this pandemic has had. And we need more services for our students, not less. We need to hold on to the staff that we have to help our students, not try to make it with less. And so again, I am really hoping that all of our community and our school committee members go to every city council meeting, speak out, um, help us figure that this out. Feel free, if you come up with an idea to um, email me. I am looking for ideas from everybody. Um, but we cannot, cannot just take this as it goes. We can't. And I am going to do everything in my um, power to see that staff are not um, let go and that the budget is not annihilated. But um, it is preserved to do the work that it needs to do. And I am going to fight to hold on to as much of our reserves as we can because we have no commitment that we can and will be rescued if we drain it dry. And so it is, it's not like other departments. I watch and I've asked over and over again. I have watched other departments come back to the well and say, we didn't have the money for this. Will you give it to us? Yes, we will. We don't have that luxury. I would love it if we did. But we don't have that right now. And until we do, we do have to hold on to those reserves. We need the budget that we put forth. Mayor, I see you unmuted yourself. Did you have something you want to say?
Um, I'd be, before I start, I just want to quickly say that I'm going to put this together in a fact sheet of just, and have that done before the public hearing. But I do want um, to make just a couple of comments. Uh, the idea um, that I would be disrespectful to parents or families or the school committee um, would certainly be not my perception nor intent. Um, I will disagree with that from my personal perspective and professional perspective. Um, everyone gets to hold their perspective and opinion. Um, and I want to talk uh, right now quickly um, just to, to get some main points out. Um, one, the reserve. So there is a reserve account. My strong suggestion over the last few years. My strong suggestion over the last few years is to actual follow section 24 of chapter 218 and define that as a stabilization fund, limit its purpose, so it is not included in an operational budget. Two, the city's requirement by law is to fund all stabilization, capital reserve, funding, OPEB as well as the tax relief fund, not just for one or 10 departments, but every single department, including schools, and we have done so. The idea that our reserve accounts would be unavailable to school is simply not true. By practice and by law, the city council can indeed vote down an appropriation. That's the public process. I can't see them doing that to schools, but, you know, there's no guarantee like there is for any department. But to think that you cannot come back to ask for money is, on its face, incorrect. By law, our reserve accounts need to include the school budget. This is a school department. It's not a school district. And I would encourage this school district with the city council to take a joint vote, create the stabilization account with its own definition. If there is a definition for that account, then we should review it immediately and use it as directed under the law. Two, in February of, uh, 2022, every department got my budget letter. It directed, uh, the department heads of what I'd like to see in the budget. And as I said in March 22 and before that in prior years, the school department should not work with any member of the city, as in the mayor, the auditor, or the treasurer to come for an agreement before that budget comes forward. That the conversation with the public and the school committee should be rigorous and that the school committee should put together the budget they think they need. Not what the mayor is saying, not what the auditor thinks you should do. And that's why I said what I did on the 22nd and before, and I will continue to say it. It's also the reason why I have abstained from every budget vote on the school committee. Because I do feel that there is innate com- conflict with the mayor voting on a budget that will become a part of my total proposed budget. In my budget letter, I think I have it up here. In my budget letter, I specifically say and give direction, which is not anything anybody has to follow in any department. I asked for a one-page narrative structured with an induct, uh, introductory paragraph and no more than five points communicating trends. A no organizational chart reflecting all positions in the department with reporting structure. I said to use the fiscal year 23 budget templates for personal services and depend and department expense accounts. Expect the templates within the next week. Further down, using the FY 22 approved department expense amount, prepare three versions of your department expense budget with the following increases. One percent, two percent, three percent expense budget. Personnel service budget must include step increases, known collective bargaining pay increases, known educational incentives, overtime for any department with a limit of $140,000. Positions currently vacant but must be filled. Any contract, any collective bargaining contracts that will be renegotiated in slash for fiscal year 23 include an estimated amount for all personnel service expenses that may be affected by these new CBA contracts. Please list these estimates and possible collective bargaining agreement changes on the personnel services. Nowhere in my letter, nowhere, did I say there would be cuts to personnel services and actually specifically asked to just put everything you have in plus what you might know for the next fiscal year. It's plain. It was in February. I asked for three different versions of the expense amount budget, one, two, and three. I trust the experts, the department leaders, to put their budget together on my budget letter or let me know why they wouldn't do that. Every other department put together the budget in the, in the structure I asked. Some of them got a one percent increase in expenses. Some got a two and some kind of three, some got a zero because they thought on expenses that they had additional money left over from prior year that they'd like to encumber and buy forward a, um, supplies for the next fiscal year. And if they get the paperwork into our accounting departments, we will do that. The deadline is June 15th. The rest of the letter gives, um, direction to pay can, uh, play, pay plan salary expenses that also we added a three percent increase on the whole pay plan and told departments not to cut any of that. And that's what they did for the departments that don't have unionized employees. I asked on or before for, uh, Thursday, February 24th to also email your updated capital improvement plan, um, which I don't know if the school has or not. And then for mayor, we'll start moving on the budget. The budget increase I proposed is that, is exactly that. A percent. Given the size of the school budget across all of our school, by all of our city budget, the percent of increase, it's a radically different number. Sixty-one percent, and I will take my part in this. Over the years, I've been very proud about putting that percent in. It's simply incorrect. I would ask members of the school committee and members of the public to go to the Department of Education and Secondary Education, DESI, and look at the per pupil expenditures based on actual students attending and what amount that is. It's also on the first page of my budget. That amount has gone down once while I was mayor and it is up this year. I do remember when the superintendent said that some budget, there would be some staff, and I, I believe it was three. I'm not sure if he mentioned that due to consolidation and that the union, um, was reminded of that. I think we all knew that too, from the many public hearings we had. I've also always said that the schools can come back to the mayor slash city council for money if the reserves are used up. If indeed there is no policy around reserves, then it is public money to be used. If it is stabilization account, and that's the reason why the city has stabilization accounts, it cannot be used without a two-third vote to the purpose of that stabilization account. The money that comes back in to this, just to the district is very well, very well described on the Department of Education's website of what that can be used for and what it can't be, and also how you show it. Since 2018, the first year that I was mayor, I have asked, I've asked the school district, um, the superintendent and the business manager to redo the budget process. I've asked the auditor to be allowed to be a part of hiring the new school business manager because of the close work they do together. This would aid in taking all of the DESI line items and do a transit, a translation document to the line, the chart of accounts the city must put together. And that includes the school department. So we can see how and where the money is spent or not spent, and we can include the school department in our financial forecasting. The debt for the new school is not the school department's. It is the city's and the general debt obligation. I think that there's a very good opportunity and we've taken advantage of the bond to buy and fund a lot of furniture and technology that this, this, this department could not afford. I talk about the buildings because I know as an educator superintendent and special ed director that a new building especially are so well-designed by a lot of the teachers, the leadership and members of the community raises morale, attention to learning, high social emotional ratings, feeling comfortable and safe and valued. Buildings are not just bricks and mortar. They are a key element of keeping teachers and students in the best possible safe place. ARPA money. The school did receive ARPA money. It's called ESER and it's under the, the American Recovery Act. ESER is used in Massachusetts as an acronym to be very clear that the number of dollars that the federal government said had to go to schools was separated clearly out and given to the main agency, DESI, a lot like the school district's money, or the school department's money is once the budget, uh, the mayor or select board determines the total amount. The other money that the school department received was gear money and that's the governor's, um, emergency educational, um, fund. And that again, is not taken into account in any of the budgets of this year and was spent in past years. One thing, the city and, um, the reserves, whoops. Hold on just a second. We'll say about the, the city's stabilization accounts and their, their strength. We have fiscal policies and they're on our website. They'll be in the back of our final, um, budget that's very clear about how much of our total budget that must be. The school department also has a percent. We include that percent in all of the, all of the city's stabilization accounts. Our stabilization accounts are at all-time highs, very, very purposely because we're looking at some things we don't know after COVID, including the condition of our students and teachers, our residents and all the other departments. Also the inflation rate. You will see again this year that those stabilization accounts will be well-funded. I will take it's exception because I was on the other side of this and worked in an outer district placement that anybody on a school committee or in the public would talk about costing our district is blatantly wrong. We give the students what they need and that's by law. They don't cost districts anything. It's not a cost, a price tag on the child. Cannabis money, we have spent it on education. We have not spent it in the public schools. We've been giving money to the library. We have been giving money to planning to increase access and playgrounds and recreation space for our students and families. Our non-net spending continues to go up and those are the expenses that aren't in the operational budget but clearly need to be taken into effect. We have been very lucky in the past two years to have a zero percent increase. We do expect an increase in health insurance starting January 1st and we are negotiating with the Hampshire Insurance Trust. That point seven eight increase includes some of that cost, but also standard costs that have just gone up, that, that amount. Staff cuts. The mayor by law can give an amount of money, gives an amount of money to a school department. The mayor cannot direct or tell what gets cut, what gets added. That is the sole decision and I, I know it's a very tough decision. I can't imagine what it's like for the superintendent, business manager and members of the finance committee. But to think that I would give an amount of money regardless if we agree on that amount of money and that I can say this money needs to go right to staff cuts is wrong, simply wrong. I don't choose staff cuts. I don't choose where the money is spent. I can't. This, the mayor creates a budget. Each department gets that amount. They are given the budget. Schools are different. Their money goes to the school department and uniquely for a lot of great reasons and the expertise no, needed in education. It's, it's the, the school department's admin team that decides that. And if staff cuts are where it goes, then staff cuts where it goes. When I calculated and did the school budget by the budget letter, which did not include any grant funds unless they were included in the expense line or the personnel line of the school district, the gap was $287,000. And that was an expense and that was with no money taken away from the personnel expense line. I also propose a joint committee between city council finance and school finance committees. That's a part of the budget schedule. I will put that schedule in with, um, and get that to folks before the June 2nd public hearing. I also proposed and have continually asked for an accounting for an apples-to-apples format. I understand that the school committee submits to DESI, but the bottom line is that the city is audited and that includes the school department money, which is a large part of our budget. Other school districts simply make a key that is agreed upon by the treasurer and the auditor, the superintendent and business manager, if the business manager serves in the function of accounting. You can simply take the DESI line items, which are many, and do a translation key on Excel that puts line items in the city's chart of accounts. Those reports then are reported on quarterly like every other department in the city and we can measure expenses to date as well as what funds might need replenishing, knowing if the suggestion is carried out and approved by school committee and city council, that the stabilization account, not reserves, is available for certain line items. And most of the budget, it's, it's not usable. So it's not something, it's like the stabilization accounts we have in the city. It's taking money off the table and it cannot be used without a two-thirds vote of the governing body. I would also ask, and I'll put in writing, um, an adoption of a state law that combines the financial, the administrative, formally combines the administrative departments of personnel and administrative employee functions into one, created by both the school department and our HR department to consolidate cost but also process. Our school budget as well as all of our other budgets are based mostly on local receipts, tax dollars, local, um, your excise tax, and those dollars are finite. And we're looking at suppressing those dollars with things like the senior tax, uh, credit write-off. We're looking to give and, and do give We're looking to give and and do give discounts to the veterans. And I think you can all agree that those discounts or abatements on taxes, we need to, as a community, but mostly city council and and myself, need to seriously consider what other abatements we need that will take, that will lower the amount of taxes we can collect. We are saving for against that with our many stabilization accounts. And that will not reduce the access or the minimum amount the school can ask for out of reserve accounts. It is a minimum and it can go above. The last thing I would just like to mention is that the percent that public safety, oops, sorry, the amount of public safety and that huge increase is actually not an increase. We funded last year, one half of educational incentives for police and fire and only 50% that were obligated to do for their contract because we wanted to make room in our savings accounts before we paid out the second half. This budget reflects the full amount of incentives for both of those unions that we're required to pay. We put them in the full amount, one, because a lot of the public did not like the number of appropriations that were coming for those exact costs. We put them fully in the budget. So we would, everyone would know what those full amounts was and it did, it bumped up. But if you look at past years and what was funded on that line item, and then you add the appropriation to that line item, it's the same amount. As I said, I will put this in documentation form also for suggestions for future budgets and processes. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Um, thank you. I do have a couple of things to say. One, the 61% that we quoted tonight came from your auditor. It did not come from our heads. So that was a figure your auditor gave. And when we're talking about the budget, you may not have specifically said that we're going to lay off people. But if you look at your budget and you compare our proposed salary line to what you proposed, that is where that large amount comes from. Because your amount is clearly, I think it's $361,000, $366,000 less. So your budget is proposing a reduction in salary of that amount. And if you take that salary amount and divide that by, say, an average salary, you come up with the number of teachers who are being proposed to be cut. So that is where we get that. That is from your city budget, which I'm looking at right now, your proposed salary line and our proposed salary line. They do not match up. So it may not be a specific request of yours, but it was a suggestion that by changing that amount, you're implying that that's what should happen. The other last thing I I do want to say is I know you're saying we have access to that money, but Marin and Dr. Leclaire and I were at multiple meetings of city council subfinance where you have said that you will not approve any special appropriation as long as we still have reserves.
Absolutely, I said that. And I said that because it's a reserve account with no definition of how that money can be used. Absolutely. If you have that free cash, you should use it before you look at the larger stabilization funds that are defined for exactly such use and there is money in those accounts. The 61% includes non-net spending, which is an agreement that both the superintendent, the business manager and the auditor sign. That amount is also something that the superintendent and business manager could clearly have calculated. They have the same agreement. I mean, we can go back and forth and I I will until the end, but I will tell you now that I'll put a document together. And if you hear what you hear and what I say, I can't change that. That's what you hear and I take that as real. That's why I do a budget letter. That's why I consider all of the money that the school district has to offer. It is the school district's choice to use the reserve whatever they need to, to plug the budget and not ask for money or check how much money has to be in those stabilization accounts for school department. I can't make those choices. Also, any recommendation I make around cuts, whether it's salary or expenses, just like following the school budget letter, you don't have to follow. The MGL is very clear.
I just wanted to clear up because you had said you did not recommend that, but you did change that salary line on the city's budget. And districts have reserves. School districts are very different from every other department in cities across the nation, but especially across the state. And they have reserves that are used for the purposes that we have used. And I will tell you, the school committee has been very, very transparent as to how those monies have always been been used. So my, my statement tonight is that I really want to see school committee and city council and the mayor all together at once, talking and figuring this out.
I would suggest that the school department redoes the budget according to the budget letter, so we can see apples to apples is, which is what I asked for, strongly suggested in February, and that is not what I got from the school committee or leadership.
So I think you're talking about you asked for a one, a two and a three percent.
Not across personnel, only expense. And when I got the budget, I did. I looked at the total amount. I looked at net school spending. I looked at the amount that net school spending went up point seven eight. I took inflationary rate of 4.6 and got 4.38. And I did not include in that number, the $1.7 million that the city pays out to charter and choice. While we get charter and choice in, I subtracted what we get in or what the state calls assessments from revenue. And it's a million seven and that's gone down. But it's still a million seven. That's directly from the school budget and and we pay it as a city.
Okay, Marin, did you have anything to say?
I am trying to put words to an extreme level of frustration. We have, you have been a part of our presentation. We do not approve multiple budgets through the school committee process. We approve one budget. So to keep coming back to us and demanding that we put forward three different budgets to you is not understanding our process that you have been a part of. And so that's confusing to me. And the fact that you waited till the 11th hour to provide your budget to even the city council until the night that you presented it and never raised these concerns to any of us in the past three months is, does not show leadership, does not show any quality of collaboration or an attempt to work towards a combined city budget. So the fact that you want to say that that's what you demand at this point is, seems very late in the process to suddenly say, go back and redo something that we can't offer you three different budgets. We offer one budget. That's how our process has always been. So I don't, yes, you're right. We can go tit for tat for as long as you want, but I don't think that's going to get us anywhere. So what, again, I'm going to say this once again, you, we have put forward our budget, you have put forward your budget. It is now in the court of the city council. It is my hope that the city council is very clear to you and to your budget and says no and says that this is not an acceptable budget for our schools and not an acceptable budget for our community. And then we will work with you and with the city council and we can negotiate to find a solution that works for everybody. Because your budget does not take into account what we need for our schools and for our children. And it is very unfortunate that you have to wait to the 11th hour to present this information to our city. This is not acceptable. This is not a way to bring leadership to our community.
I need to correct the record.
Sure.
Chair. So one, to do an expense side budget for 1%, 2%, 3% is an Excel spreadsheet. It's not a whole new budget. You take what you had in '22 and you just make an Excel spreadsheet with those three different percents. And that's what I asked for. And I asked for not to touch the personnel when I gave that budget letter out. Two, last minute. One of the last minute, one of the last minutes was because the school committee, when they took their first vote from nobody's fault, there were clear in a five-page letter from our city attorney, there were concerns about the public process and how we ran that that budget meeting. Now, I know that I got an email from the superintendent and the chair saying they read the charter and they felt fine, but our city attorney disagreed. And it's not how big or little it is, the public process is important and I'm hearing that. So we revoked it. That wasn't two votes, that was one vote. And the timing of that vote held up the rest of my budget. You could have changed it. Maybe you didn't, maybe you would. I never mentioned cutting staff before I presented that budget. Those who think that I did, I know what I said. And I know what I wrote in February and I know what I got from the school district. And I put my city budget together.
Okay, your salary line on your budget clearly is different from our salary line. It's much smaller. The other thing I'd like to just say. So that implies, that implies that you're letting people go. And it is a suggestion as to how
I can't, Chair, I cannot let people go. Are those two line items different? They are. That's my suggestion to the school department on how to hit their numbers. A part of the reason why I cut that is that there are staff that are going to be added on and paid through grants. That's in your proposal. I, I, you know, I'll rate up my concerns, but I understand your implications. I understand your opinions, your frustrations. That's fine. I'm responsible for the whole city's budget. I do not feel like I shorted the schools. I do feel that there's some misunderstanding about how a school budget is put together and what the tradition is of the schools. And what also, I've done it all across the city to increase our financial stability, including the school department for the last four years.
Okay, a couple of things I just want to say, again, I don't want to go back and forth and back and forth, but in terms of the revote, we revoked because we we were interested in helping the process move along rather than argue. But I will say this, you have been a voting member and a sitting member of our school committee for years and we have done our budget hearings exactly and our ads exactly as we have done every year. And you have never said anything until this year. This was a surprise to us. Rather than argue, we redid it. However, you also said you do not vote and that is part of your communication. I agree. You have always abstained from voting on our budget, but that does not mean that you have not communicated with us. And in years past, when you felt that things were not going to work out well, you talked to the finance subcommittee and you talked to us to let us know that there were certain things that you just thought were not going to work. You have not done that this year. And March 22nd, whether you wanted us to revoke or not, you still understood the information that we were presenting and did not communicate with us about not being able to do any particular item. That is a long time to go by without hearing anything from you. So, you know, I totally agree, you have always abstained, but you also are always communicating. And I totally
When I got the school budget, that was not following my budget letter. That was a clear communication to me that this is what the school wanted to put forward and they were emphatic about it. You were all worked very, very hard on that budget and that's what you felt was needed by the school. Correct. I understand that and I respect that.
But we did not hear anything.
And you, but also you didn't follow the budget letter in February and say, hey, we need to do this or not. So I made my budget based on the information I had without what I asked for.
Okay. I just wanted to clear those points up because the the revote, again, I was very surprised to hear that because we have always done our public hearing. And again, this school committee wants to work with you. As soon as you said you wanted us to redo it, we scheduled to redo. This is because we are always trying to work with the city to cash out any problems and solve them. Again, I'm sorry, I know you see it differently. You respectfully
Communicated the way you usually do. Share. Yes, you are now implicating that I stopped the vote and made it happen again. I asked our lawyer, after several people asked about the process, to clarify if that vote should be taken for surety. I did not write a five-page letter detailing that, Cindy.
No, I hear you.
You keep saying, but you, please then say that it was not the mayor who made the revoke. It was not the mayor that had made us vote twice. I will share the letter with the public. But I take extreme offense. And if we, if you're driving and you continue to speed and continue to speed and then you get pulled over, is it not breaking the law? Is it not breaking the process? Why wouldn't we do it the right way, whatever the MGL says? Really? Like, what would be that issue?
So
It's not a blame thing. It's, it's the law. And so we can improve.
I did not say that you, I at least I
Did say the mayor.
Well, because you at the meeting said, I, I don't think you can take the vote tonight. And we talked about the process.
The superintendent said the same, the superintendent agreed with me on text between the three of us. I have a screenshot of it. I said, we should take, we should postpone, we should extend the public hearing and not take the vote that night. And Allison responded, yes, I agree with the mayor. I, you know, and then I went on the record talking about my concerns because I did not want that to go unsaid.
And I hear you. What I'm saying is we didn't have a problem with redoing. We, but that didn't mean that you couldn't communicate. That is the difference.
And I feel like
Just because we redo the vote, you still could have spent time talking to us about concerns that you had. I believe we needed heads up. I believe that we still can work together and I'm just hoping for some sort of middle ground that we can all meet and work on to fix this problem. Okay? That's my hope. So anybody else want to say anything else about this? I mean, Megan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I heard things and understand the situation. I, you know, admittedly as a new member and new to the finance committee, I'm learning as I go. A new member and new to the finance committee, um, I'm learning as I go. Um, what I'm, I heard was that. Because of the description of the money. That we call the reserve account. Um, because that of the way it is described. Nothing in the budget that has been proposed can change unless all of that money is spent. Did I understand that correctly?
Mayor, that question was for you.
It would be my policy with the reserves not to find it as a stabilization account. To have that reserve spent down. And then have the school come for an appropriation. Yes. That would be my policy.
That might be an area um. That I would request more information from. Um, so one of the benefits of being a new member is that uh we were just trained. Through the state. And we were very specifically trained in that that we are not to, the school committee is not to spend that down. But if we were to. Um, be in a position where we don't have that money reserved for special.
Yep, there are four uses for that money can be used for.
I'm sorry?
I said there are four uses that those reserves can be used for nothing else. And they also, and I'll send you the citation. That they suggest that the school committee and the legislative body of the municipality jointly vote to create a specific stabilization account. That defines that money. The city does that all the time with cannabis, tax relief, capital reserve. So the use is very clear from year to year, from year and comports with state law. And there can be no, you know, other use. I'm not saying that the school. Department has ever misused that money, but. As I look at this. We should just follow the recommendation.
Right. I guess the question, I, yeah, and I absolutely hear this, the the technical differences in description of the stabilization versus calling a reserve or a slash or or whatever. Um, I'm saying that this is the training that we just went through for school committee as to what the school committee has to, whatever you want to call it. Have ready and waiting um for students who might move in mid-district or mid-year. But all to say, I just, I just really um am hoping that. Given that this feels like a really central issue to all of this, right? It to me, it feels like it keeps coming back down to. Whether or not this money can or should be used to make sure that that teachers don't lose their position next year. I I just would love to reiterate what Cindy um said about just a good faith effort on both parts. I I understand that this. Ideally, you would like to see this be a stabilization fund. And with better descriptive language around it, but we are talking about our kids for next year. We cannot spend all that money down. We just can't. We're already spending a million dollars from it. Um, and we're, we're talking about teachers on the line and I don't, I don't know what to, like, what is, what do we do? What is the solution?
You come back to the city and I think that the school committee has an opportunity under mass general law to come back to the city for anything and nothing. And not related to just those four expenditures. And they have in the past.
Down. Which we can't do.
You've done it in past years. And not come back to.
From my training I just went through.
I, I've been told by the business manager and the superintendent in different years that they've had to include all of the reserve to make the budget work.
No, that's not correct. We've never used all of our budget down to zero. That is not absolutely emphatically not true.
I, I mean, I just don't.
It's unfortunate that you keep wanting to just change numbers to to present your view on something. But if that's not how this budget is intended, that's not how that line item is intended. It's not how schools committees across the state use those funds. So I know that you want to have control over our budget and control over our reserves. And think that we should be able to be in a situation where a student comes into our district and we need to come back to city council and say. We've got this extra expense. Can you please fund it? No, that's not, that's why that line, that's why that budget is there. That's why we have those funds. So we can continue to argue and we can see this differently. But we're going to continue to have this very different view. And if you want to put. Your budget forward and risk, you know, telling us that we should cut eight positions is how you think we should balance our budget. That is a very unfortunate situation and is a very lacking in leadership for our community.
You're entitled to your opinion.
Thank you very much. That is my opinion.
I just really, what like solutions focused, right? Like what, what do we do right now? We, we are in the position where we can't spend this fund down. That is our training. That is our charter. That is our mission. That is our rule from the state and our guideline. And without spending it down, we can't keep the teaching positions. I'm genuinely looking for ideas. What do we do?
I've submitted my budget. And it's been.
You can't cut classes, can't cut.
I, I, I would. I was, you know, I just, the, Megan, I hear you.
Yeah, it just feels like a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, I just feel like this is what the school district does. This is how they use this money. This is how they use that money. And my numbers change every time. An opinion is opinion.
So one of the things I heard you say, Mayor LaChapelle, was that the funding that you've done for this coming year is going to put more money into the bank accounts. More funding to our stabilization for future possible issues. So we have a current issue in that we will have staffing that we believe we need. To be able to provide our students with the education they need. So instead of put money bank, money into the savings account, the way you're suggesting, we're suggesting to spend. A half a million dollars more than what you put forward in your budget for schools. To provide our students with education that they need and teaching staff that they need now. But you think it's better to put money into savings accounts for some future rainy day? We also have almost nearly $1 million in free cash. That also could be used to help stopgap this issue of a difference in funding between what you're proposing and what we are proposing. So, yeah, there are different ways we can have discussions. We can try to move towards. Better collaboration between the city finance and the school finance. We can find ways to come to better terms on these different bank accounts. But to right now at the 11th hour, tell us that we should be cutting eight positions from our budget. And be saying that your solution for the city is to put money into the bank accounts to save them for a future rainy day. And to hold on to almost nearly a million dollars in free cash, that that's the right solution for our community? Yes, it is my opinion that that is wrong and that is not leadership on your part.
Again, your opinion.
Thank you. And I agree. That is my opinion. And I certainly hope that the city council tells you that same opinion when they vote no on your budget.
That's the option. This just isn't personal. If they vote no, then they vote no. It's the will of the people. Like this is the mayor, you know, really, you're not talking to the mayor. You're talking to me as a person. And threatening me that the city council is going to vote no. That's their option. It's your option as a school committee and a superintendent to cut staff. Any suggestion I put into a budget does not have to be followed. It's very clear that the school committee alone with the superintendent makes the choices of where the cuts come from. If the school committee would like me to do a proposed budget based on my numbers. To not cut staff except the three that will be consolidated, I'm happy to do it. And I will do it in July. But right now, I'm trying to get through the budget process to find out. What the city council would like to do of their own free will with their vote as they were elected. By the residents of East Hampton to do so. Like, that's, that's the process.
I mean. I, you're, you're saying that we don't have to follow um letting staff go. And I hear that. But $560,000 short of a budget. When we have so many fixed costs of which you're aware of, transportation, you're aware is a fixed cost. We have to transport our children. We have these tuitions for kids that must be paid. And those have increased. You know that amount. There are so many fixed costs that we cannot avoid paying. So we also cannot avoid taking a huge hit. And so we can say that we don't have to follow your recommendation. And I'm going to be honest. I don't want to follow your recommendation and reduce salary. And I will fight tooth and nail not to do that. However, that does not help the fact that we are still short. When we have very specific fixed costs that will not change. So we have got to. We've got to find the money somewhere. And I'm asking us to go back to the city. And that is my hope that we will go back and we will um. Come up with something together that will fix this problem. That's the only thing I can come up with because right now, um, this is just, it's going to be devastating for our school district. So if we let staff go, let's just play this out. Let staff go. First of all, we've betrayed staff. I agree. Those staff have stayed with our children and worked with them during a pandemic. They are worth their weight in gold. Second involved, what do you think parents are going to say if their class sizes are growing? And we have built the school and now we don't have the staff to, to man our schools to, we don't have the bodies there. Okay, then they're going to leave in droves. And what is going to happen is that parents will choice out if this eventually goes through. And this becomes the catastrophe that I'm worried it will be. Parents will leave in droves and they will choice out. If they choice out, you're going to kill the you. The budget. That's what I mean by the you, not you personally, but the budget will, um, the lack of funding to this budget. Will kill the district if we lose too many kids to choice. I don't want to lose valuable teachers. I do not want to lose students. I want to figure this problem out. I'm going to say it again. And again, I will continue to ask that we work with city council and the mayor to fix this problem. We can say the money can be cut everywhere. We have looked at the money. We have looked at our fixed costs. It is not, it's not this tiny little amount where we say, oh, okay, well, we can just cut this and everybody's going to be fine. It's a $560,000 shortfall. And it has to do with fixed costs that we do not have any choice but to cover. So we need to be creative and we need to figure it out. That's all I can say over and over again. And we can say, oh, don't cut staff. Okay, where am I going to get that $560,000? You can say, pay down your reserves, but this Megan has told you and I have told you and Marin has told you. We can't go down to zero. We cannot. That is not what we are supposed to do. We are not a small department working under a city budget. The city. The school committee budget, the school budget is very different. It is elaborate. It is a monster. To understand and to look at. It cannot be just reduced in a few sentences. We can give summaries. But it is an enormous um budget. That has many, many, many fixed costs. So. All right, I'm going to hope, I'm going to hope that uh we can come back to this and we can fix this. Again, I don't want to be adversarial. I really want us to all work as a team and support our families and our teachers and our students. So does anybody have anything else to say? Because otherwise we will go on and we will table this discussion for a little while. Um, and we will do the best we can to figure it out. I know that the um finance subcommittee meeting uh members will be meeting again. I know that we intend to go to um city council and uh see if we can fix this. Again, I'm open to options.
I mean, I. I don't know if you're talking about city council or the actual meeting, but on June 2nd is the public hearing with the finance committee. So I would also say that that is a good place as well to have that or this conversation.
Absolutely. I, I agree. And we will be there. So that's going to be the June 2nd.
Yeah.
Yep. Alrighty, and I would encourage as many people um as can to be there because we need to figure this out. Okay, should we move on? I want to look really quickly to see if anybody has anything else they want to say.
Megan? A quick question. Um, so one of the um. Points you brought up, Mayor LaChapelle, was about um the apples to apples and translational. Piece of the, the budgets. Um. If, and this is a genuine question on both ends, like a, as we go into a good faith trying to figure this thing out. Um, is that like, is that what would be required from the city end, from your end? To relook at some of this and try to understand and and along with that, is there any? Information that we can bring about the reserve from the mass um charter for school committees that. Would help in understanding like, like what, what should we do as we enter this next phase of the conversation with you? I guess is the translational piece of that part of it?
I, I think that the, the translation from DESI line items to the gen, the chart of accounts from the city would be helpful for everybody involved, including city council. Um, as far as required or not, the school committee and the superintendent have um no obligation to do that. I can ask, I have asked. Um, and then. The um, I will cite in the, the information that, that uh framed my decision. I'll, I'll cite the law. And direction from DESI on that. And you can see if it matched um what you heard or have a different citation when you read that.
But that translational um view of the budget would be helpful in terms of. Hopefully making that match up.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right. I don't see anybody else wanting to weigh in. So what we'll do is. We will go on to our superintendent update.
Yeah, um, I just, the only, I have two updates. One is. The, we were scheduled to have a presentation tonight about CPAC. And that was delayed partially because we knew we were having this budget discussion. So that will be coming at the next meeting. So we owe you that one. And the other thing was um COVID numbers. We had a high of, I think, 59 cases last week. And I'm happy to report that cases have been significantly lower. This week, probably by half so far. So um, um, no doctor. Well, I am a doctor, but I'm not a medical doctor, but um, um, hoping. That we're going to start seeing a turn this week in COVID cases. So um, I know it's, it's just Tuesday night, but normally. Uh, for the past few weeks, I've had quite a few cases. On Monday after the weekend. And that's really kind of set the pace for the entire week. And I had very few cases yesterday. So, or fewer. Maple's having a little bit of an uptick, but they, they were quieter today. Um, so I just. Fingers crossed that we're turning a corner and um we can make it through the end of the square. So that's my COVID update. And that's all I really have to say because it's almost nine o'clock.
So.
Thank you.
Sorry, but if I can ask a question on the COVID situation. So um, we did have a report last week. We have not received this week's report yet. Um, so I know that there's a lot going on, so I understand that. But at the same time, last week's it was in the red. Um, and I, I guess my concern is. If we were still in the red, uh, or if we were having this conversation last week. We would have been, that, that was this, that was the line that we had agreed earlier uh when we moved to a mask mandate, I mean, remove the mask mandate.
A mask recommendation.
And move to a RASK optional recommendation, right?
Yep.
Um, that if we reached red again, that we would revisit this conversation and see if it was time to put masks. Um, back as a requirement. So um, I, I don't. So um, I, I don't have the report for this week. Uh, we do have it for last week and it was in the red. Um, and so I guess um, you know, it's, it's a little, it's a little hard, hard to have this conversation, but we do only have a few weeks left. So I don't necessarily want to wait to another school committee to have a conversation about whether or not we need to go into our last few weeks of school with masks back in a mandatory situation to ensure that the end of year events all happen safely. Uh, and this maximum number of students can be there and participate in the last weeks of their school and their end of year closings events.
And, and I apologize if last week was in the red. I did not, that did not register in my mind. So Megan needs to hit me over the head when she sends me those, those emails. Was it in the red last week, Megan?
No, so we're, we're talking about two different things.
Okay, alright.
When the COVID advisory group met, we're talking about if the CDC transmission category is in the high category, which would indicate that our hospitalizations have increased past ten new hospitalizations per day. The CDC has not bumped Hampshire County into that zone. We in the city have continued to look at that old green, yellow, red, just to give us an idea of kind of what might be circulating in the community. And again, um, as you indicated, it's been a very busy couple of days. I have been very focused on budget stuff and not able to compile the numbers. But I can tell you that I have the numbers in front of me. Um, not fully compiled and not ready to go. Hopefully they'll be out tomorrow morning. Um, the situation in East Hampton, this, from this week, the report that you'll get is essentially the same as the week before. High percent positivity, a, a high case rate. But we remain in the CDC category. And from the COVID advisory group that met that we discussed, not last week, but two weeks ago. The decision out of that group was that if the CDC category escalates to red and, and to be, I um, to be frank, said that at that point, we should go, we should trigger mandatory um, that was not the consensus of the group. The, I believe, and Allison, correct me if I'm wrong, at, at that point, it would be very, very strongly recommended. I don't think we.
It would be strongly recommended. Yeah, and mask advisory.
A mask advisory. Um, so given the CDC um categories and what's going on in the city, there is nothing that has pushed us there. I have high alert for that and would be um.
And she wouldn't let me, she wouldn't let me miss that.
Okay, but we have always for the last, for several years now, that's, we have not looked to CDCs as the only factor, right? We have very much looked at our local.
No, we have.
And our numbers here in this community, right? And we are in red in our community on your chart.
Yes. Yes. Um, so that was the uh, this, I don't want to say decision, but yeah, I guess that was the decision that came out of that COVID advisory group from two weeks ago. That was that, a meeting that was called to sort of figure out at what line would there be a mask mandate versus advisory versus just mask op- mask optional. I'm, have been very vocal all along that masks are really low harm um and have some potential benefit. However, they have to be high quality masks. Um, and getting students and staff and teachers to do that in a school is difficult. Um, and the advisory groups um for a variety, you know, I come at it from the epidemiology and the public health science. And if you wear masks all day long, and it's one of those masks, it works really darn well. Um, we don't have all of our lunches outside. The folks on the school side are thinking about things like, can you see um lips and do reading? And what sort of services are, are children needing? And what came out of that COVID advisory group was that there would be no mask mandate, but a mask advisory at the CDC level of red, of high transmission.
But the CDC right now is recommending masks indoors, correct?
Not in Hampshire County, not yet. All of, essentially all of New England's. But not Hampshire County. And Hampton County.
So we would follow, if the CDC went into the red for cases in Hampshire County, we would follow the guidance aligned to the CDC, which would be a recommendation for wearing masks in public places. So we would be in a line with the CDC in their recommendation.
Except that the school committee can say that we need to mandate masks.
But you, you really, what is your expertise? You're, you are, you know, I'm pushing back because we said earlier in the year that we were going to rely on the COVID response committee made up with the, you know, I'm not um, a medical expert, but made up of several medical experts, including the city health department, who has the expertise, who's in contact with the DPH. They are the ones that should be leading the charge. I am not the medical expert. They are the medical experts. The CDC is the medical experts. We should be relying on that guidance now that we have it. I mean, early on, when you were making decisions, it was because there was a lack of guidance or so much fragmented guidance that no one knew what to follow. I mean, now it's not really, as school committee members, we are not the medical experts. If the health director in the city of East Hampton issued a mandatory mask mandate, we would have to comply. She is the medical expert in the city and she takes her cues from the Mass Department of Public Health. That's who we should be relying on for, you know, our decisions. The CDC and our city health department.
No, I, I'm not saying that I'm thinking of mandating masks right now. But what I'm saying is that this is an issue we have to continue watching. My hope is that we're going to get out of the year um without any harm to our students and our staff. And if numbers keep rising, then we have to move pretty quickly to um, to help them because it is amazing how quickly if masks are on for a week or two, how quickly those numbers can come down. And I'm just saying, I, 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 I believe that we need to watch this. That's, that's where I stand right now. We need to watch this very carefully.
I will be shocked if our numbers come out as high as last week.
I hope they do not.
Yeah, we've had, um, I've only seen two positive pools this week. And one was a positive because it was an inconclusive pool, which means that someone stuck the Q-tip in upside down. So, so I mean, that's all I've seen so far. And the past few weeks, I, I get every single email for positive pools. And so it's Tuesday night and it's been quieter than it has been in the last several weeks.
And I'm hoping it continues.
Yeah, really. Agreed.
Well, that's, I mean, that's definitely helpful to hear. Again, from our view, from my view, looking at last week's COVID report, we were in our local numbers all back into the red. And so I hear though that those numbers are a lot lower than they were last week. And so that's helpful. And hopefully we will see, we'll get to see that ourselves in terms of the report when we see it tomorrow.
To be clear, not the city numbers. The city numbers are just as high. Uh, Dr. Leclair is referring to student cases in the school are lower this week than last week.
Correct.
The city staff. Uh, to be completely frank, we are in the midst of a fairly massive, what I would call silent surge. And I could, you know, to, don't put me on the Epi soapbox because you know I can go for a long time. Um, there's the amount of fatigue um around this is if you consider the balance of um what policy should we put into place and what effect it will have in the school. You know, I, it's hard for me to argue back, push back to the COVID advisory group that a mask mandate is really worth it. We saw firsthand um the, the folks who are going to mask, I hope are already masking at this point. But I, I absolutely agree with you. We are in the midst of a, of high community transmission. There's no question about that. And the numbers that you see in the dashboard are an underestimate. Probably by a lot.
But I don't think our numbers are as much as an underestimate. And I think that's, I think that's important to point out because pool testing catches so much. I mean, and I'm not, again, like Megan, I don't need to, you know, make belabor this point. But we catch so many cases of kids that are positive for COVID and have absolutely no symptoms. Don't even, you know, they're not sick. They're, it's uh, they think they've won the lottery going home for five days and they're living their best life. So I mean, I know that's not everyone's experience, but it's to my point that um, I think that we're catching quite, uh, I think my number is a more accurate number than the city number.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly. The fact that surveillance testing is happening in the schools, it's still um, probably an under report. If you consider the city numbers, we're probably catching something like a quarter of the true number of cases. We're probably catching something like eighty-five to ninety percent of the cases in the school. We just don't have the surveillance testing in the, in the city to know that. It's everywhere in our city and not, not our city, but the cities around here right now.
Correct. I love pool testing. My district does pool testing. Um, and I can tell you that it is phenomenal at catching kids before they really eh end up um giving it to everybody else or to a staff person before they um transmit to somebody else. So I love pool testing. I love to see it go down. I will say to the community and to everybody here, um, what I'm hearing from a lot of people though is that this is a very different COVID. Um, I am hearing many people who are getting very sick. Um, including, um, this is not the, the people who are vaccinated are doing better, but they're still also getting sick. This is a very different and very catchy version of this. And my hope is that we're going to get out of the year with as few cases as possible and be able to do all the events that we would normally do.
Um, that's exactly it though, Cindy. And that, I guess that's my concern here is that we're about to have an event, a series of events across all our schools where we have all the community coming in and being around our students and with our students and with each other's students. And it, it's a concern that we're, that with your, you know, Megan, even what you're saying, that there are a silent wave right now happening because most of the people in the community either aren't testing because they don't realize they should, or they are testing and not reporting because there's no requirement to report. And that's, that's a really big concern to be heading into our final year events and have no mask mandates or no mask requirements or no mask strongly recommends in place. I, I think that we need to look at that for finally your closing events. Um, you know, and so I think that it's, I think that we, I understand fatigue. I've got fatigue myself. We all have, right?
Yeah.
But we also are trying to still keep our community safe. Um, and I don't want, you know, I don't, I don't want it to be said that schools are the cause of super spreader events all across the state um in the last week of school before everyone goes home for summer. Um, so I think that, I think this is our last meeting to have this conversation. And I'm, I'm sort of hearing that we all have fatigue and don't really want to have it. And there's plenty of reasons why, you know, we shouldn't make requirements. But at the same time, i- it feels like we're kind of tossing the ball down the road and saying, let's just hope nothing happens. Um, and that I think is unfortunate, you know, unfortunate, understandable, but unfortunate.
So Mike, go ahead.
I was just going to say that we as um an administrative team are holding all end of year events outside. So they're not, they're not going to be held in a building because we feel that being outside is a, a, a diff- a level of mitigation, if you will.
I'm glad you're bringing this up, Mary. And I think it's a, a big deal. And I, I um, in general, I'm in support of mask mandates. Um, and I think it's a, I understand that from a school perspective, it's a really tough situation and, and difficult to navigate from the student and family side, but also from what I hear from the union and the teachers and what they want to do and, and what is comfortable for them. Um, I think it's a really good point. I'm glad you, you're bringing it up. We're absolutely in the midst of really high community transmission. No question. And I, I think I, I can say this because it was um shared on social media this week that we have um, sort of tangentially a child from our community who is very sick. Not school aged, they're younger than school aged. And they have COVID and they are very, very ill. Um, so it's, it's not nothing. It's a big deal still.
And I, I, I'm not too tired to talk about COVID. I'm really not. Um, I'm really thinking that we need to take very careful steps and look. Um, I think that we need to watch each week. Are the numbers going down or are they going up? I think every event that we can have has to be done outside. Um, and there is no guarantee, and we can really ask, there's no guarantee that in a week we're not going to have a number of cases and have to ask for a mandate for the last couple of weeks. I agree. Um, this is a very catchy version. And and it's not pretty for a lot of people who get it. There are plenty of kids who, who, um, sorry, Marin, I just wanted to finish this. There are plenty of kids who are asymptomatic, but there are also plenty of people who are not. And they're quite sick and they missed time. Um, and I think we have a responsibility to watch those numbers. I really, um, really do. I also really hope that everything possible happens outside and that um Megan and Dr. Leclair, you make us aware of where those numbers are going each week so that I don't care, I'm more than willing to have a quick emergency meeting to talk about a problem. Um, i- if it arises because we need to get our kids safely through the rest of the year. And if we can stop a wave, a mask, I, I have to tell you, a, a, a mask is a very simple way to slow everything down and stop the spread. So Lori, uh, I'm sorry, Marin had something to say and then Lori, I apologize.
Go ahead, Lori.
Marin, you can talk first. It's okay.
I was just gonna add, I think that um, you know, like has been said here, I'm a school committee member. I work in renewable energy. I'm not a scientist. Not, you know, Megan, obviously you have a lot more expertise in this area than I do. Um, I think that what I would ask is that particularly going into these last few weeks, that the COVID committee gets back together more on a regular basis. And we do keep a really tight eye on this in the last few weeks. And so that we do get a recommendation from the COVID response community uh committee to say if the, if the numbers are in place and the concern reaches a level that we need to make something change, then they're meeting on a regular basis. We can quickly have a meeting and make changes if we need to, right? Use the scientist community, get the information that we have, understand that the data is very limited right now and not, and, and um, the numbers are hidden in terms of what they actually are. So I think that's, that's what I would request. Um, and that then we can get together. And I would say that um, you know, Dr. Leclair, I'm very appreciative that here that all of our upcoming end of year events are outdoors. Um, and I think that it also goes to a next step because of what we know is going on in our community right now. Put down areas so that there's marks of separation. So there's clear space between each individual family group. We did that last year in the graduation where people were separated by, by sort of the pods or family community groups that worked. We can do that again. Let's take the extra effort. I'm sure your principals are probably already planning on doing that kind of stuff because they care about our community. But I'm just asking for us to be intentional about that and make that clear that we want to do that as well for our final events.
I think that's something that needed to be said. So thank you, Marin. I like, like that. Lori?
Marin, I thank you for saying that um to make intentional plans for when there are events. And um, in no way do I want to put any negativity to something that I attended today because I was going to speak about it and other to thank um the GSA that invited us to attend a phenomenal presentation today. I was so very proud of the students who presented on creating a more inclusive environment to DHS. And Chris Silver and Lauren Kessler, I applaud everything they're doing. environment at EHS. And Chris Silver and Lauren Kessler, I applaud everything they're doing. And once again, I was, I do not want to say anything negative about that particular event because it was so positive. But I can tell you, as somebody who's high-risk and who always maintains distance, I was, I was nervous being in a closed room without windows and having people without masks. So, I think that anything that's planned, you have to think of that because I wanted to hear every single thing that was being said, but I found myself being very nervous in that situation. So, I think Dr. Leclerc, and I know that Bill Evans is on, I mean, it was at the high school. And once again, thank you for inviting me. And Ben was there. I, I wanted to be there. But you have to realize that now with the cases going up and not everybody is masked, you have to at least have a space where somebody can get at least six, 10 feet away. I couldn't do that. So, let's be cognizant of that as we move on. But I really have to say that what went on, that particular presentation was remarkable. And the students are phenomenal, that they are trying to create this more inclusive environment with thinking about professional development. And the leadership team was there. And I, I thank you for, for having that.
Anybody else?
Just wanted to, again, say thank you to Mary for bringing it up and being an advocate for this. It's been a long, two-plus years in public health and epidemiology. And I, I wish, I was not saying I'm hesitant to bring things like mask mandates back up, but it certainly has been a tough two years. So, I appreciate that there's another person, and I know multiple colleagues on this call are, are the same way. So, I, I appreciate it to all of you.
So, what I take from this is that we're going to keep a tight eye every week on the numbers. And then we're not afraid to call an emergency meeting, that events are going to be outdoors, and that we're asking Dr. Leclerc to have her administrators plan intentional spacing to keep people safe. I love those ideas. I think they're great. And I, you know, anything else we can come up with and do, it's been a rough year. I will tell you about this. I have had so many people say to me, I made it through the first COVID. I did not get it. I made it through the second one. I did not get it. And then, all of a sudden, everybody is getting it. This is very contagious, and it is not a benign version that just everybody, you know, feels like they have a sniffle or has nothing at all. For many people, this, I, I know so many people that I, that made it all the way through this pandemic till the end and are now very sick. So, I intend to take this very seriously week by week. And I thank Mary for bringing it up. I totally agree. And we've got to watch it. So. Okay, all right. Any other announcements?
No.
Okay. Did you say no or yes?
No.
I missed her. Okay. Subcommittee reports, Finance Subcommittee and any other Subcommittee updates?
Finance Committee has not met. We will be meeting to review options and how to proceed and looking to obviously meet with the City Council on, Finance Subcommittee City Council on June 2nd next week.
And, and our meeting is, just for the public to know, our meeting-
May 31st, we'll be meeting at 4:00 PM. That'll be posted tomorrow, hopefully.
Yep. So, the May 31st at 4:00 PM, I encourage people to come to and listen as we talk about what can be done and what we should be doing. Any other Subcommittee updates?
We haven't met for the policy, but as soon as we get together, I will let you guys know.
Thank you. Lori?
Just a quick one. And I think I even just hit Jill Pescuini-Torch's phone, and I did not mean to do that. I just wanted to make sure to pronounce her whole name correctly. I'm sorry, Jill, if I just called you. I wanted to thank her and Dr. Leclerc for meeting with our Safe Roots to School Advisor. And plans are in the works to make dismissals and arrivals safer for all students who will be going to our new school. And they're also talking about planning a walking route map. Jeff Bag was also there, our city planner, and it was a very productive meeting. So, I thank those who attended.
Great. Thank you, Ben.
Just quickly, the Collaborative is meeting Wednesday. And-
Awesome.
First time in a while. Yeah.
Okay. So, now we have other. Does anybody have another? I do. But Megan?
I'm going to give you my PTO update. The PTO is really knocking it out of the park this year. They had a bingo night that I had to miss due to sick children. I was going to be the person taking the money and hopefully calling things out. I reported that last meeting, and I did not get to do that. But it was a huge success. And students and parents had a great time at it. They also hosted an Afro-Brazilian ensemble that performed last week at the elementary schools. That was a big success. Students really loved it. They will have another meeting coming up. Date and time will be determined and posted to social media. And you can always contact Ann Tally or Megan Kelly-Bag. And I hope that these updates are inspiring you to join for next year. It's going to be even bigger and better and more stuff going on as they transition to Mountain View.
Okay. Any other, other? Ben?
Just adding to what Lori was saying, I want, also wanted to thank the GSA for having us today. It was really fantastic to be able to be in the building and see students engaged in serious work around the culture at, at EHS. And it just reminded me of, like, it's, it's easy sometimes to forget that students are even involved in this process. And it's so nice to see them doing their thing. And the integrity with which they're attending to it is fantastic. And also, Juliana and I met with Cindy Mojico last week, and we're talking about next year, trying to have regular kind of interactions, whether if you once a month or what, what have you, with either the GSA or other groups, leadership groups at the high school, and possibly middle school as well. So, there's some, some nice interaction coming up next year.
I like it. I like it. My other is that I'm going to, when I announce the next meetings, you'll hear that there's a July 19th and an August 9th meeting that we had scheduled. I'm going to be having, I'm asking people now to think about, I would like to drop those two meetings, and we'll talk about it at our next meeting. That could change. We have a lot on our plate right now, and we are working really hard. I'm hoping by June 14th, things will be more balanced, and we'll be able to close out the year. And my thinking, and I would like everybody to really think about this seriously, is we really don't have a lot going on in the summer. We, August 23rd, we really should have a meeting because school is going to be starting up. But I think, given the, the years that we have had, the year we had this year, and the, I think people are tired. And if we do not have something specific that is going to ask us to meet, I am going to be proposing next week, next meeting, that we skip those two meetings. That would be the July 19th and the August 9th. I am hoping the world settles down and that everybody thinks that is a really good idea. So, I'm just giving you a heads up. That's my other, and that's my hope. And other than that, anybody have anything else? Okay, all right. So, we have action items. School payroll.
Yes, I have three for us tonight. I'd like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 5/10/2022 in the amount of $1,733.41.
I'll second that.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 5/19/2022 in the amount of $618,671.88.
Second that.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 5/19/2022 in the amount of $266,133.78.
I'll second that.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Okay, our next meeting dates are June 14th. I am hoping on June 14th to figure out that we don't need the July and the August 9th meeting. Other than that, we do have an August 23rd meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I would like to move to adjourn, please.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, Megan?
Megan Harvey, good night.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, good night.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, buenas noches.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, good night.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, good night.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. So, good night, everybody. Thank you for your attendance. Thank you for this late night. And keep supporting your schools. We really appreciate it. And we're listening.
Please come out June 2nd.
Yeah. Good night.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.